...started, I just want to say, how about them Nats?
Yes, yes. Woo hoo!
And hopefully, we're going to be out of here before that game starts. But I'm not trying to rush anybody.
Okay, I'm going to talk long and long.
Okay, I would like, at this time, to welcome Mr. Daniel Cortez, the Director of Public Affairs for the National Veterans Court Alliance. Mr. Cortez is a resident of Stafford, as well as a veteran, and a much appreciated sponsor of the Stafford's Armed Services Memorial. He will be here today to make remarks at the conclusion of National Hispanic Heritage Month. I look forward to Mr. Cortez's presentation, as well as continuing our Heritage Month observation in the coming years. Mr. Cortez, are you there?
There you are. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do appreciate this opportunity on the final day of Hispanic Heritage Month to come before you again and speak about the past and present involvements of our community. But before anything, let me share with everybody a belated Columbus Day. And it was a great day in Richmond yesterday, as I was there to witness the dedication of the Women's Memorial, a moving and significant event. Hispanic Heritage Week began September the 15th, was signed into law by President Johnson in 1968. In 1998, it was expanded by President Reagan to a month. September the 15th was chosen because it's the independence anniversary of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence September the 16th and September the 18th. September the 27th, President Trump demonstrated his magnificent outreach with a celebration ceremony honoring Hispanic Heritage Month in the East Room of the White House. Over 300 of the nation's most distinguished media, civic, and political Latino leaders attended. Stafford and the region were well represented, as Mr. Philip Garcia Chichister, our fine Assistant Commos Attorney, along with Judge Ricardo Legal of the 15th Judicial Circuit, and his wife Cory, along with myself and my wife Susan, stood just a few feet from the President as he spoke about our community achievements and the successes of the administration, citing Hispanic unemployment at the late 1930s with rising Latin home ownership, and it doesn't get any better than that in my community. Governor Re... responsibly took time to honor and celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month at the Governor's Mansion in Richmond on the 29th. The Hispanic family is a close-knit group that places great value on appearance, as well as a sense of honor, dignity, and industry. That duty extends to many serving in our armed forces. Presently, they are approximately 1.1 million Hispanic veterans in our military. And again, I locally mentioned Mr. Jay Garcia Chichister of the Commos Attorney's Office, who fought in the Middle East as an example, as well as my own son, who, like his father, is one of five Cortez family generations to answer the call of duty like you did, Mr. Chairman. Our patriot... Our patriotic Latin community has fought in every major combat engagement in the United States. In fact, 61 proud Americans of Hispanic descent have been awarded the nation's highest decoration, the Medal of Honor, and many thousands have been wounded. National historians acknowledge Hispanic military service since our Revolutionary War. Troops from Spain, Mexico, and the Caribbean region, along with Hispanic Americans, were instrumental in defeating British forces along the Gulf of Mexico from Pensacola and Baton Rouge to Natchez and Mobile. At Yorktown, French and American forces were able to sustain their triumphant efforts and pay for salaries, provisions, and ammunitions, thanks in large measure to financial donations received from Hispanic women in Cuba. History reminds us that the Treaty of Guadalupe Hidalgo, signed February the 2nd of 1848, ended the Mexican-American War. There, the United States played...paid Mexico $15 million in an agreement that included our territorial expansion, annexing the northern portion of Mexico, resulting in what is today Texas, New Mexico, Arizona, Nevada, Utah, and California. The term Hispanic originally denoted a relationship to Hispania, more commonly known in ancient times as Portugal and Spain, with the people colonized by those two countries. Hispanics are not a monolithic group. Various subgroups reflect differences in ethnicity, culture, origin, and cover a wide racial spectrum. Hispanics are a proud mix of European, Asian, African, and Native American peoples. The term Hispanic and Latino are used interchangeably in the United States with peoples with origins in Spanish-speaking or Portuguese-speaking countries like Mexico, Costa Rica, and Brazil. Hispanic is not a race, but an ethnicity. The term Hispanic was first adopted by the United States government in the early 1970s and has since been used in local and federal employment, mass media, academia, and business market research. It has been used in the U.S. Census since 1980. According to the 2010 Census, Hispanics accounted for more than half of the growth in the United States. Between 20...between 2000 and 2010, the U.S. is the fifth-largest country with Hispanics in the world. The majority of the U.S. population is Mexican-American, followed inside by Central and South Americans, Puerto Ricans, and Cuban Americans. Sadly, during Hispanic Heritage Month, our Latin community continues to be the folks due to illegals, aliens, not following immigration law. And issues such as 335,000 asylum case backlogs are exacerbated by fraudulent claims. But our 800,000 Hispanics in Virginia, of which 12% reside in Stafford, are mostly law-abiding, fine citizens like yourselves, who just want to obey our laws, pay our taxes, and responsibly raise our children and grandchildren. But sadly, we see illegals violating our laws that do stigmatize our entire community. That is why the majority of our Hispanic community support officials adopting an immigration system that serves our national interests. Elected officials like our fine Commos Attorney Eric Olson and Sheriff David Decatur ensure our community and Stafford as a whole remains one of the safest communities in Virginia and probably the nation. They are worthy of retention come November. You know, as an independent voter, I am, like most independent Hispanic voters, who support President Trump's plan to construct a border wall and ensure the swift removal of any unlawful illegal drug trafficker and those that peddle the deadly drug fentanyl and prey on our children. And it is important to note during Hispanic Heritage Month that thanks to President Trump's Border Focus, migrant apprehensions from Mexico are down from 90% in 2007 to 38% today. In September alone, just over 52,000 migrants were apprehended, a drop for the fourth consecutive month. However, increases remain significant from countries such as El Salvador, India, Nicaragua, Brazil, Bangladesh, and China. I appeal to you to help end chain migration, eliminate the visa lottery, and move the nation to a merit-based entry system. But we must responsibly address the dreamer community with compassion. The dreamers who are genuine victors...of victims, not their uncles or aunts or fifth cousins trying to game the system. In closing, it is important to speak to the contributions of Congressman Rob Whitman to our proud Hispanic community. Congressman Whitman has been responsibly partnering with the President and key members of our Hispanic community who have taken the lead to aid the National Veterans Court Alliance in promoting H.R. 886, the Veterans Treatment Court Coordination Act of 2019. The bill not only aids Hispanic veterans, but all veterans who have faced incarceration from various misdemeanor criminal acts that mark them for life and is helping to prevent the suicide of over 20 veterans a day due to their wartime trauma. Sadly, over 700,000 veterans are in some phase of the U.S. and Virginia judicial process. This bill is a logical second step to the President's First Step Act that aided felons. And as a court mentor myself for Judge Regal in Spotsylvania, I can attest the program works. Tomorrow, thanks to Congressman Whitman, we meet with several key representatives and Senate officials to hopefully advance the legislation which has White House operative support. And with the help of our fine Commos Attorney Eric Olson, who sure has my vote, and the judiciary, we hope to establish a veterans' docket here in Stafford. On this, the last day of Hispanic Heritage Month, our community must recommit ourselves to promoting and respecting the rule of law. And we should acknowledge other key elected officials, such as our fine Treasurer, Ms. Laura Rudy, and the Commissioner of Revenue Scott Mouski, that directly contribute to our overall quality of life with responsible and dedicated service. I thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your courtesy and outreach during Hispanic Heritage Month, and especially you, Mr. Chairman, for your gentlemanly statesmanship, and I commend all of you. Have a good day.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cortez. This time, we're going to do additions and deletions. I do know there's one addition, an add-on, Community Engagement Proclamation honoring and recognizing the life of D.P. Newton. Item number 19, rezoning of Holly Corner Manor, has been deferred until next year by the applicant. So that is a deletion. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, that would be good, wouldn't it? Roll call. I'm so excited about that game last night. It's just going right out of my head. Madam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bomke?
Here.
Mr. Cavalier?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Dudenheffer?
Here.
Mrs. Mauer?
Here.
Ms. Shelton?
Here.
Mr. Snellings?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Okay, getting back to additions and deletions. The other item is, there's a proclamation for the Stafford County Rotary Club. Instead of this evening, we're going to move that until this afternoon. Are there any other additions and deletions? Mr. Foley, I think you have some.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just a slight correction on item number one on the consent agenda. The original agenda referenced September 6th, 17th minutes. Those are actually the minutes of October 1st. That has been changed on the agenda online in the actual minutes that you have before you are October 1st, so we just made that correction.
Do I have the...a motion to approve the agenda as amended? I have a...
Second.
And a second in a discussion. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. At this time, it is my pleasure to welcome the Stafford County Rotary Club for a proclamation that Ms. Shelton is going to help me give. Senator Duckworth, Stafford County Rotary Club Foundation, and Rotary Club members are coming to the meeting today to emphasize National Polio Month. So if you'd join me at the podium, I'd appreciate it. Well, it's certainly a pleasure for us. The Rotary Club is a great organization. There are a lot of different organizations in our community. They all do good work, but I have never seen an organization that continuously looks for something to do to give back to the community. They're involved in so much stuff, and it's all stuff designed to improve the quality of life of the community and to help people in the community. So it really is a pleasure for us today to recognize them. And at this time, I'd like Ms. Shelton's going to present the proclamation.
Well, Ms. Duckworth, this is a huge honor for me to talk to all you guys and you about all the things that you guys have done. So, we have a proclamation recognizing October 24, 2019, as World Polio Day in Stafford. Whereas Rotary is a global network of over 1.2 million neighbors, friends, leaders, and problem solvers in over 200 countries and geographic areas who unite and take action to create lasting change in communities across the globe. And whereas the Rotary motto, "Service Before Self," inspires members to provide humanitarian service, encourages high ethical standards, and promotes goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas Rotary in 1985 launched Polio Plus, and in 1988 helped establish the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, that today includes the World Health Organization, who, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation to immunize the children of the world against polio. And whereas polio cases have dropped by 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating this disease. And whereas today Rotary has contributed more than 1.9 billion and countless volunteer hours to the protection of more than 2.5 billion children in these 122 countries. And whereas Rotary is working to raise an additional 50 million per year, that would be leveraged for maximum impact by an additional 100 million annually from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. And whereas these efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical staff, laboratory equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents. And whereas, in addition, Rotary has played a major role in decisions by donor governments to contribute more than $8 billion to the effort. And whereas Rotary and their partners have reduced role cases to the lowest levels ever with only two countries, Afghanistan and Pakistan, reporting cases of wild polio virus. And whereas the infrastructure Rotary helped to build facilities around the world to end polio that are also being used to treat and prevent other diseases and create lasting impact in other areas of public health. Now, therefore, let it be proclaimed that the Stafford County Board of Supervisors, on this 15th day of October 2019, that it be and hereby recognizes October 24, 2019, as World Polio Day in Stafford County. And Ms. Duckworth, I am so proud to have all these whereas's. And the reason they're there is because you guys are so important, and look at what you've done. And so why don't you tell us about what your global initiative is going to be today as we give you this wonderful plaque?
Thank you so much. Thank you. Yes, would you please? Thank you very much. This is very exciting for us. And yes, polio has been a terrible disease, and many of you in this room may remember when we had the iron lumps and when we were not allowed out in the summer, and we couldn't go swimming, and then we had to get shots, and then we got the little drops. And now, throughout the world, because of people like you and Rotarians and other organizations who have contributed many hours of time and their resources, their financial resources, to help do away with polio, now we are almost polio-free. The two countries that she mentioned, Afghanistan has had only 16 so far this year, 16 cases. Pakistan, because of all their wars and their problems, they were doing pretty good, and now they have, as of the 9th of October, they have 72 cases. Nigeria, our third country, and keep in mind that in order to be declared polio-free, a country has to be no cases at all for three years in a row. And Nigeria has...is over two years now. They're two years and counting. And when they reach the third year, the African continent will be totally polio-free, thanks to you and others throughout the world and all of their hard work. So it's a real honor to be here. And just as a little bit of an aside, another exciting thing that we do, when we administer the polio drops to the children, and it's children five and under, there's also a vitamin A that is now included in that vaccine, which helps immunize these children and help their disease prevention. So that unto itself has helped over 1.25 million children save their lives. And we give soap, and we give mosquito netting and so forth. And why do you do that? Well, I'm going to tell you, when you have to go back year after year after year after year to immunize these kids, they get pretty suspicious. The parents are like, hmm, what is this all about? And so we add a little incentive. We give them soap, and we give them medicines, and we give them mosquito netting and so forth to try to help encourage them to come and allow their children to be immunized. Every single child has to be immunized. And again, thank you very much, and thank the board, thank all of you for continuing to support this great effort and for helping us declare October the 24th as World Polio Day, and this is being done throughout the world. And we have our club President Leanne, and we have...and the North Stafford Club is here too, because we have two really strong clubs in Stafford County, North Stafford Club and the Stafford Club, and we are delighted to have...and thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much, and thank all of you too for your support.
Okay. At this time, we're going to do presentations by the public. That's a chance for the public to come up. Anybody can come up and speak on any subject, unless it's a public hearing this evening. We ask you to hold your comments till the public hearing. When you get to the podium, state your name and address. Unless you're a student, state your name only. You'll have three minutes. When the red light...green light comes on, you can start. The yellow light, you have one minute, and the red light, you need to wrap up your comments. I have four speaker cards. The first one is Mr. Henry Thomason. Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Good afternoon. My name is Henry Thomason of 97 Indian Point Road in Stafford. I'm here basically as a resident of Marlboro Point to talk about construction on Brook Road. As we all know, Brook Road is constantly under construction, and the latest construction, which is in South Brook Road, seems to be consistently delayed. I'd like to just make...I'm mainly here to say we're frustrated. This has gone on forever. It was supposed to be completed on January 1st, and they told us September 1st, and they told us October 1st. Who knows when it's going to be constructed? I have one comment that I'd like to make. First off, someone should, as far as administering this contract, look at the contract, see if there are any penalties, and see if they apply. I think we often let the contractors get away with murder as far as these delays, and then we don't hold their feet to the fire with the penalties that are included in the contracts. So someone needs to do that. The second point I'd like to make is on Northern Brook Road, we had a construction project completed earlier in the year that reinforced raised roadway. When the construction was finished, they promised that they put guardrails on either side of the road, and you literally are driving along this roadway with 20 feet drops on either side. It's very disconcerting. Those guardrails have never been put in. I have no idea why they haven't been put in. I was told that there was a contract problem, but nevertheless, it's very often these things just go languishing away, and I'd like to point that out. I'd like to conclude my remarks by saying I am running for treasurer this November. I hope everybody votes on November 5th. Hopefully, I will be talking to you on November 6th with a big smile on my face. But nevertheless, I just wanted to introduce myself and let you know I'm proud to be a Stafford resident, and I hope everybody in the room and everybody on TV today can see me and hope they vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. My next speaker card, Mr. Paul Waldowski.
Paul Waldowski, I'm a lifelong student, but I'll tell you, I live at Eight Pickin' Lane. How's that fence fence doing? Three weeks from Election Day, of course. And I attended a forum, I'll call it. I won't call it a debate. I just gave them feedback that there are five constitutional officers. Only four will be on Election Day because the Quirk of the Court comes up every eight years. Oh, that's a $5 bet. And three...doesn't mean you're in the World Series, but I hope to God that you're in because I want them Yankees, so I really have never been to a World Series game. These platforms you keep giving people about heritage and other aspects. We're all human. We all bleed red. I went to Pets Plus today. Dean will be eight years old on Sunday. He's a rescue Shih Tzu. He's named...the day after Easter, which is Dingo's Day in Buffalo, New York. closed session. And I read...candidates that there's going to be a sixth high school. Like, it was already approved. We already have 18 elementary schools, five high schools, and I have all the utilization. The 2020 census is coming. You don't even have in these columns, you have unofficial enrolled. You have no ratios, no square footage. As a matter of fact, North Stafford High School has more rooms than even the two newer ones, Colonial Forge and Mountain View. Oh, I don't want to forget about the $65 million fiasco that knocked down a $39 million building that should be a technical...oh, let's see, we could make it automotive or computer science, but we surely wouldn't have made it a museum because we already have history majors all through this county. And you have hardly no mathematicians. Hmm. So revenue is profit, and that's what a constitutional officer is supposed to do, is take care of the revenue. And your property's been appraised, folks. It has not been assessed for the last 20 years.
Thank you, sir. Just one comment, that tonight's meeting with the school board is open to the public, and it'll be upstairs in rooms A, B, and C. Next speaker card is Mr. Jeff Adams.
Jeff Adams, 449 Kellogg Mill Road. About six weeks ago, I invited you out to the farm to take a tour. Haven't seen any of you. This weekend's the last weekend. Mr. Snellings, you're off the hook on this one. I'm going to pick on Mr. Cohen. Mr. Cohen, George Washington District's got farmers. I want to help you with some credibility. So come out this weekend. You can hand milk a milking Jersey cow. Jenny Han milks her. We got a bottle baby you can feed, hayride. You can grind corn and feed the goats, the chickens, the ducks, the turkeys. It'd be great for a campaign ad. So I hope to see you this weekend. Now, and I know you know a cow from a horse because you were on the ag committee at one time with me, so I...I can go easy on the education. The other thing, I've got a question on the ballot. There's a bond referendum for roads. And like a lot of people, I want to know how it's going to affect me if it's passed. Right there at the farm, we've got some steep banks beside the road. I've had the fence taken out a time or two and replaced. So I would like to know if I'm going to have guardrails or if I'm going to get to pick the color and style of retaining walls that you're going to have to put in to keep the road from falling into my fence and destroying the fence, because it's going to be expensive to replace that fence. And to replace the fence, we're going to have to move the telephone lines, and Verizon doesn't do that for free. Now, I know I'm jumping the gun. I'm just going to assume that the referendum's going to be passed, but I've got 1,200 feet that I'm concerned about. And the second concern is you have an easement, a conservation easement. I don't think you want to lose any square footage of that easement. So that's just some of the questions I have. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. There is a...Mr. Foley, correct me if I'm wrong. I think the public information meeting is here on the 24th. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Here in the board chambers?
Yes. Yeah, and that's one of the major events as a part of our full communications plan.
Yeah, so the 24th, we'll have an informational meeting for the public here on the bond referendum.
And there'll be a mailer to every household with explanations of what projects are being proposed and which ones are...were prioritized by our...by our study.
And you all have approved a full communication plan that's been being implemented for some time.
Correct. My last speaker card is Ms. Ruth Carloni. My last speaker card is Ms. Ruth Carloni.
Excuse me, I've had a bad fall, but I came down here because we found out that, according to the advertisement yesterday in the paper, that today, at this time, you were going to have coverage of Holly Corner. Is this correct or not correct? Has that changed?
It was advertised, as I announced at the beginning of the meeting, it has been deferred by the applicant. He deferred it this afternoon about 2:00.
Yes, you didn't have the courtesy to answer my phone call. That would have helped. It's very hard getting over here. So what I'll discuss, yes, Jeff Adams has a fun hayride to take across the property. And I'm wondering what happened to the roving hen house that used to be moved, if it's still there. It's funny, every morning, the hens would wake up in a different place on the farm because he'd keep moving. But anyway, what I'm concerned about right, what I'm concerned about right now is I invite you all to go down to Abel Lake and see our sandbar. I don't understand why there hadn't been any prior notification about conservation of water. We have been in a mild drought for quite a while, and finally, it was announced statewide, but it's been on the news broadcasts. There is, we're seven inches below normal, and we are in a, I would call it a mild drought, but our pond is nothing but a mud, just a little mud hollow with happy frogs in there. But Abel Lake is nothing but a sandbar, and you really and truly need to get out and take a look around your county. But there should be some edict going out to tell people, we're supposed to have rain tomorrow, but it's not to be, I hope it won't be seven inches all at one time, but you just have to send something out and let people know to conserve. We have 58 new homes, front and back of us, that are on well and septic. Some of those people have never been on well water before. And the total between the two of them at 5,000 gallons a month is 400,000 gallons a month coming out of our reservoir, so to speak, underground. And this is important. I really had intended to talk, as you know, about Holly Corner, but ouch. Anyway, please consider it. Do get around and take a look at Abel Lake. And that's it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, all the speaker cards I have. Anyone else in the chamber like to address the board on any issue, subject? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Reports by board members.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes, thank you very much. First up is, unfortunately, lead off with a bit of sad news, and that is the passing of DP Newton, who is and has been an icon in Stafford County, in particular, in the White Oak area for many years. Anyone who knows him knows that he was truly the real term of what a gentleman is. He was a very gentle man. He was a terrific family man, a great historian. The work he did with the, I know it makes music ring. The work he has done with the White Oak Museum for the Civil War is amazing. He was a man of true character, and quite honestly, I was very proud to kiss, sooner he my friend. So we give his wife Bonnie and his family all our thoughts and prayers during this time. Secondly, I had the great honor of going to the Little Falls Water Treatment Plant for them to receive an award. Those people do great work. Our county workers are amazing. They received a 15-year platinum award and a five-year gold award for the great work that they do for the county, and they deserve the recognition, and it was great to see the county administrator and his team down there to recognize these great people. I attended the economic development and Stafford Museum meeting at the airport to get more public input, and Ms. Shelton and I sat and listened mostly to what the citizens had to say and their contribution. Tended the tribal, the Potomac Tribal Health Fair that they do every year, and they forced me to get a flu shot, unfortunately. And I also attended their annual meeting this past weekend. Lastly, as the chair of the Public Safety Committee meeting, we heard our monthly report from the Sheriff's Department, and once again, see that all major crimes are going down in the county. We're very proud of the fact that the school protection officer at Ferry Farms Elementary School, with the help of one of the students, saved a young child's life who was choking. That was exactly what was intended when we came forward with this plan, to put these protection officers in the school, was to make them be helpful and to have a great rapport with the student body. And it's amazing that, on a short time in the job, he has built that rapport and seen to fruition what Sheriff Decatur and many of us were working for. The Fire Department has been doing its Operation Warm, which is, they work with the Stafford County Public Schools about getting coats for children. The date for that has been shifted and is to be announced. I am proud to say that, once again, the firefighters and the rescue are doing their work for breast cancer awareness. A friend of mine, who was a member of the EMTs, Kevin Kerr, designed this shirt this year, and you still can buy the shirt. So far, they've raised $1,000 for breast cancer awareness. Last year, they raised about 1,500. And if you're still interested in making a donation and buying a shirt, contact the sheriff, the fire chief, he's sheriff too, I think he's amenable, but contact the fire chief, and he will be helpful to doing that. And so that concludes my report of a rather busy time. And other than attending the memorial Saturday, I'm hoping to get down to your farm, sir, to, once again, milk a cow.
Saturday or Sunday?
Yes, sir. I wrote, it's in my calendar for Sunday.
Mr. Dunhefer?
Just briefly, I want to thank Mr. Adams for bringing up our, the bond referendum. I was going to talk to that briefly. Technically, the county as a whole is not allowed by law to advocate for passage or not. Their only ability is to actually put out accurate information concerning the bond referendum, but me as a citizen can advocate for. I think everyone that has ever listened to me or talked to me know that transportation is a major issue in this county. There are a lot of questions, as the one Mr. Adams mentioned. The information meetings and the mailers should go a long way to answering any question. If anyone has any additional questions, I'll spend whatever time is necessary with any single or single individual or group to talk about why we need it. But my major point is, is that we, if you're satisfied with the way the traffic is in Stafford County right now, that you don't care about the traffic issues we have on all the major secondary roads in this county, then if I was you, I'd vote against the traffic problems. But I think any person who owns an automobile in Stafford County knows that we have terrible, terrible deficiencies in the safety and in the congestion mitigation across the county. We spent 18 months studying the roads in Stafford to come up with the list of projects that we, that are listed. We're limited in space, in a lot of cases, on what we can actually say. But I would ask anyone who has any concerns or is concerned that there's a question or there's some validity about how we'll spend the money, please bring that question forward, and I'll be glad to talk to you about the effort and the work that's gone in and the work that will be going into the future. So we have no more meetings before the next election, so I'm asking everyone to please come out and support the bond referendum so that we can at least work toward fixing some of the major, major issues we have in the roads. Thank you.
Mrs. Mauer?
I want to thank everyone for their understanding. I missed the last meeting in order to attend a stem cell regeneration medical conference. It was quite informative, and as I move off the board and move into looking at solutions for my medical issues, this was one that couldn't be missed, so I want to thank you for your understanding. I also want to congratulate Barley Naked. If you haven't been to Barley Naked in the Rock Hill District, it's hard to get in, quite frankly. They are just doing gangbusters of a business out there, and after the Tech Parkway Shopping Center had been vacant for so many years, it sees signs of life, and they had their one-year anniversary last Saturday, and over 1,000 people, not at the same time Fire and Rescue, showed up to celebrate them, and it's been a welcome addition down there in that Tech Parkway area. So I wanted to congratulate them and thank them for investing in Stafford. One other item, I am pulling number, item number one from the consent agenda.
Ms. Shelton?
Well, since we're going to talk about transportation, thanks. I'd like to add my congratulations to Green Ridge. We finally got those traffic calming measures installed. It was a long process, and the longest part of that process was waiting for our turn to get those installed. So I want to congratulate those that are enjoying those right now. We do have a couple of more traffic studies that are going in the Quia District. Back to the questions about Brook Road, there's a, we've talked about it before, we have a, Quia has a monthly roundtable. But the update on Brook Road at the end where it's flooded, where that road was collapsing, it was misinformed that there were going to be guardrails there. There wasn't. And so there's never been any intent to put guardrails there, so I'm sorry you thought that there would be guardrails. I would like to also talk about, we had a really awesome, awesome meeting, and Mr. Cavalier joined me at the Rob Whitman's field hearing for broadband. That was attended by representatives from Richmond, as well as, you know, federal representatives from Rob Whitman's office, and then our local representation to ask questions about what are we doing about broadband, not just here locally, but all across the nation. The third thing is I was blessed to attend the AG Wright debate again this year. Ms. Mauer, missed you. And so, but it was really, really well-attended, and I enjoyed it. Thank you, ma'am, for turning me on to that, because it's a really fun event to be able to really look at how smart some of our middle schools are. And then the last thing I'd like to do is I'd like to pull item 15 off the agenda. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Baumke?
Yes, this will be very quick. I was out on the West Coast most of last week, so I was very happy to return back to Virginia last night, and I have no comments for today. Thank you.
Mr. Cavalier?
Yes, did some fun stuff last week, actually. First of all, had the opportunity to read to a class of first graders at Hampton Oaks Elementary School, Ms. Rachel Omera Paddix's class. And it was, I read the book called Crankenstein, and a very, very exciting time there at Hampton Oaks, and I enjoyed myself thoroughly. Most of the time I go to these places, and I certainly learn more from them than the wisdom that I can impart. I also had the pleasure of attending the Brookpoint High School Girls Volleyball Game, where they, they played North Stafford, but it was basically a fundraiser for breast cancer awareness. And I didn't bring a prop like Tom, but I do have my partially pink t-shirt also in the bag there. So they raised a lot of money. It was a big turnout and a very successful event. Also, wanted to thank the NAACP for hosting the Stafford County Candidates Forum last Friday night. It was a good turnout by most of the candidates, not all, but it, if you got a chance to see it, it is on their, the Stafford County NAACP Facebook page, so they have the full video there. And last but not least, there will be the First Annual Apple Festival at Wide Water State Park on Saturday, November 2nd. So if you haven't been out to Wide Water State Park, this is a good opportunity to go see what that's all about and have some fun while you're at it. Thanks.
Mr. Snellings?
Just real quick, a comment made by one of the speakers concerning Abel Lake. I did visit the lake last week. It is very low. But as I announced at the last meeting, that lake is not used for drinking water. It was shut down a couple of years ago. All drinking water for South Stafford's now coming out of Lake Mooney. We are in desperate need of rain, and hopefully, we'll get some tomorrow. So hopefully, those lake levels will come back up. Thank you. Report of the county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no report at this time.
County Administrator.
Mr. Chairman, we have two items. The first is the monthly construction report by Brian Council, our Deputy Director of Public Works. And after that, we will do our first quarter financial report with our CFO, Alex Espinoza.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Brian Council, Deputy Director of Public Works, in charge of capital engineering and construction. Happy to be in front of you today to give you a report on some of the more pertinent projects that Public Works has going on throughout the county. First up, Fire Station 14. I think it's important to understand that this report was created about two weeks ago so it can be included in the various meetings prior to the board meetings. So a lot of work has happened in the last two weeks. So instead of following these items, I'd like to give an update on how it stands today, not how it stood two weeks ago. Most of the interior finishes are complete. The exterior still lacks some site work, some site work that's necessary for opening, but a lot of the site work that's necessary is dependent upon removing the old fire station that currently sits there and configuring the site for full usage. So the process is to get the building, a document c permit for the building, get the staff moved into that new building, then once they vacate the structure in the back and the temporary road around to the site, if you've been there to the site, get them in the site, demolish all of that, regrade the site for final completion. So once substantial completion occurs, there's still, you'll still see some work going on there to try to accommodate staff. We anticipate substantial completion probably the second week of November. The contractor is still telling us, according to their schedule, that they think they can hit October. We're just, we're telling you, we just don't, we don't see that. We hope for it, but we just don't see that. So we've been in close talks with Fire Department. They're anticipating all of these, these future dates, and they're adjusting accordingly. Brook Road, similarly, similarly to the Fire Station 14 project, I'd like to give you an update on where it stands today, rather than what was ongoing when this, when this update was provided. The road closure, as you're aware, is continuing. There are some odds and ends out there, I'll call them, to get, to get where the road can open in two-way traffic on a consistent basis. There is some guardrail that still is in, still is in progress of being put in place. There still needs to be final paving and, so the final striping and signage. The contractor has repeatedly committed to October 26th. We think that is possible. We think it's probably going to happen, based on our best interpretation of what we see in the field and the contractor's progress, that the end of next week is certainly possible to reopen the road. When that road is reopened, there will be, it will be necessary to have intermittent road closure, single lane closures, while the contractor completes some of the other scope of work. It'll be under traffic, but single lane closures at a time.
Baumke?
So there seemed to be some confusion. Are there two different segments of Brook Road that we're working on? Because from, some questions that I asked a couple of weeks ago, somebody indicated that part of the project was completed at the beginning of this year. You know, a gentleman just stood up and talked about Brook Road being delayed. I thought we were ahead of schedule on parts of it, and then this is a different component. Is that shown here, or why is there so much confusion out there? Can you help shed some light on that?
Yes, ma'am. The gentleman that spoke earlier, I believe, referred to two, two different sections of Brook Road. One on the section that heads out towards Marlboro Point that's past the area that commonly floods in rain events. There was a section that VDOT repaired earlier this year, I believe, or late last fall, on a severe storm called, caused a washout on a tributary there. And they replaced that with a new culvert. That section was done, independent of anything Stafford County has going on, on another section of Brook Road, further south between Andrew Chapel and the southernmost point of Brook Road. That's where the county is administering a roadway where the county is administering a roadway improvement project from a little north of the Potomac Creek to a little bit south of Potomac Creek, so it's considerably south of where VDOT did their project. That project has road closures allowed within it that have been ongoing for a while. The overall project continues to be ahead of schedule and under budget. So hopefully that'll clear it up and be answered.
And that's what I think we need to make sure, that that information is out there in the public, because I don't think it is.
I agree, but that's the situation there.
All right. Thank you, Brian.
Next, right outside of our doors, from where we stand, the Route 1 and Courthouse Road intersection improvement project. That is on schedule to all the VDOT milestones for design, right-of-way acquisition, and construction. So we're right on schedule with that. No significant changes or updates to provide there. We called it Belmont Ferry Farm Trail Phase 4. If you've driven down River Road, you've seen that the trail appears to be complete, and it is. It's substantially complete. It's terminated up to the east side of the Route 3 bridge. Pavement is down, some site restoration is ongoing, but that is, for all practical purposes, it's open to traffic, even though no formal indication has been made public notice. But people are walking on it. I drove down there today. I saw some people enjoying it today, but that project is substantially Phase 6 part of the same project, there have been some new updates on this. There was some debate about some property ownership and the initial alignment of this trail project. That, we believe, has been ironed out to where we know with very good confidence what the ownership of that property is, and we have the intent to bring to the Infrastructure Committee at its next meeting some new data and information for that, to hopefully get some direction from the Infrastructure Committee and maybe possibly the Board on which alignment is desired for the Phase 6 part of the trail. Emory Mill Athletics Field, this is Phase 3 of the overall Emory Mill Park project. If you've driven up Mine Road a little bit, you've seen that the sod is down, and there's good growth achieved, mainly because they're watering it, not from all of the rain that we've been having for sure. But this project is well within the project schedule as we meet now, and no anticipated changes to the project either, so it's on time and on budget. Maria Church Project, Road Safety Improvement Project, much like the Courthouse Road, Route 1 project, it is on schedule. No major issues currently going on with that, other than we're meeting all of our milestones. Route 1 Telegraph Road and Woodstock Intersection Improvement Project, that's a long title, but that is currently meeting on its schedule. I know that the public meeting date is somewhat up in the air right now. I think that may need to change, based on some logistical challenges with meeting some schedules. But other than that, public meeting needing to be changed, that is on schedule as well. Onto some utilities projects. Claiborne Run Interceptor, I've reported for a while that this project is very near completion, and now it's nice for us to say that it has met substantial completion, and site restoration is underway. And again, I'll say it for many times, this is one of the most challenging projects watering the water in sewer a utilities department has ever had to try to do. Sometimes it seems harder to do this project than it was to build Lake Mooney. Claiborne Run Parallel Forest Main, this is the project you see going on, going towards Route 3 East, towards Dogren. Practically all the pipe is installed. We're getting ready to do all the formal site restoration and do the final tie-in to the Little Falls Wastewater Treatment Plant. When this occurs, that will give an additional capacity to the Claiborne Run Pumping Station, which is at the intersection of Cool Springs Road and Route 3. The occasional overflow has happened there in the past. This is a response to a consent order we had there, plus the long-planned improvements for that. This should alleviate all of those overflows and give us a lot of added capacity. Phase 2 of that project is coming shortly in the future to give full capacity of a parallel force main from Claiborne Run Pump Station to Little Falls Run Wastewater Treatment Plant. Another large endeavor utility, water and wastewater have going on is the Lower Accukeet Project. The piping part of that project has started. The pump station aspect of that, the bids closed today. I'm not sure what time. The bids may have already come in, but I'm not sure what the results were. But notice to proceed for that, for the pump station part of the project, should occur sometime before February 2020, all for a completion date in 2021. And last but not least, the Wayside Project, Wayside Sewer Project you see going through the Wayside and down near Coal Landing Road. The last little bit of that project needs to cross Austin Run. That is in the work. I understand they've started that today. I saw some evidence of that from the road. That will be about a two-week process, and then that pipeline will be tied in, and then site restoration will follow, and that much-needed capacity increase for wastewater collection system for the courthouse area will be in place. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Ms. Baumke?
Mr. Chairman, on the last one, Brian, there have been contractor delays. I'm assuming that our county attorney was involved in negotiations to make sure we're making sure our contractor pays whatever fees and penalties that are necessary.
To date, the county attorney's office has not been involved in any of that, because we don't have any claims from the contractor requiring any negotiations. They're late, they know it, and they're just going to have to pay the penalties.
Okay, so there are penalties that will be assessed.
Their liquidated damages inherent in the contract, yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you.
Ms. Mauer?
So I want to be very careful on your wording. So they're late, they know it, they're going to have to pay the penalties. Those penalties are being deducted from their final payment. We're not going to give them full payment and then wait till they pay us?
That is correct. The process works. The absence of an agreed-to-change order, which extends the contract duration, they would be assessed liquidated damages, and liquidated damages are always withheld from final payment.
Okay, just your wording was...
I'm sorry, yeah. That's the process. Thanks for asking.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Brian. Appreciate your report.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Alex Espinoza, Chief Financial Officer, with the first quarter financial review. Being early in the fiscal year, we haven't seen a lot of activity. This is really just an opportunity to highlight anything unusual that we might have seen. Overall, revenues and expenditures are tracking within budget and within our expectations. The property tax bills are being prepared and will be ready for release within the next few weeks for the second-half billing of 2019. With respect to our consumption taxes and interest revenues, those are tracking slightly ahead of budget, similar to last year, and we will include more detailed information for you at the mid-year review in January. On the expenditure side, expenditures are also tracking as expected, and we'll be continuing to watch several major categories of expenses in our budget, including Children's Services Act, expenses, public safety overtime, health insurance, and the Juvenile Detention Center. Schools did provide us with some information, just not in time, unfortunately, to include in our presentation. Their revenues and expenses in their report are also tracking within budget expectations, and we'll provide that information to you as soon as we can. They're also compiling their September 30 enrollment data, which they will be reporting to the state shortly this month. And again, in conclusion, we'll continue to monitor our revenues and expenditures, and although limited, this report did not identify any major concerns or issues with our revenues and expenditures. They are tracking within budget expectations, and we'll provide more information to you in January.
Any questions? Ms. Baumke?
You listed on the very first page, under CSA, public safety, health benefits, or health insurance, juvenile detention center. Why would our expenses be up there? Because I've never sat on the jail board, so I'm not familiar with their structure.
Yeah, at this point in the fiscal year, they're tracking within our expectations. We're just mentioning those here as major categories of expenditures that we'll continue to monitor. We did see some fluctuations in some of these categories last year, so we'll continue to keep an eye on them and provide more information in January.
Ms. Mauer?
Just a follow-up on the previous report. Can you, at the next finance and budget meeting, provide how many contracts were late and how much we deducted in penalties? I want to make sure that we're closing that loop, that when a contract is late, that the penalties are being assessed.
We'll try to put together some information for you on that question.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Espinoza.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Foley? Let's move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to pass consent, less items 1 and 15? So move. Have a motion and a second. Cast your vote. A little slow going here today. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to nothing. Ms. Mauer, item number one.
Item number one, I was not at that meeting, and so I'm going to abstain, and I believe Mr. Cohen is going to make a motion.
You have a second? I have a motion and a second. Cast your vote. Motion passes six to zero with one abstention. Ms. Shelton, item 15.
I just want to bring to the public's attention item 15. As some of you guys know, I'm on FAMPO. I'm the vice chair for FAMPO, and Mr. Dudenheffer correctly identified a problem that we had with this particular project. The Commonwealth of Virginia, VDOT specifically, has a requirement for us to include multimodal in all of our projects. We have had issues in the past where those have not been included, as well as some other things, and we've been told publicly that the reason is, is because we didn't catch it soon enough. Well, we're on that now. And so in this particular bridge, there were some options that were proposed to us, and they did not include the pedestrian options. And so our letter that we are presenting today, that's part of our resolution to go to VDOT, is to remind them of the requirement they have for all of us, through their road design standards, to have complete streets that include multimodal. We didn't write that argument. They wrote it, and we just think it's hypocritical to not include it. So the hypocritical part is my personal viewpoint, not the viewpoint of the Board, but I want to fully support the movement of this resolution to send a letter to VDOT to remind them of what they owe us in Stafford County.
I have a motion and a second. Just a quick question.
Yes, Ms. Dudenheffer.
For those that watching this, the people that are mostly affected are people in the section of Stafford called Old Forge, which is on the east-southside quadrant. And the way this would work out is if VDOT built the new construction down there, the way they're planning it, there would be no way for a person in Old Forge to walk 300 or 400 yards to the target that's across the street, because they would block all the traffic. So that's what we're pushing for. There's also dealings with the bridge and the height of the bridge, which isn't directly related. It just didn't make common sense, so thank you.
I have a motion and a second. Cast your votes.
I have a question.
I'm sorry.
I also want to let the public know that this resolution and the letter is not just going to the Virginia Department of Transportation here in Fredericksburg, our Fredericksburg residency. This is going to the head of transportation for the Commonwealth of Virginia, Shannon Valentine.
Yes, and I would just tag that those residents, target aside or target aside, are not able to get jobs in that entire shopping plaza, and there's very little employment on the area they live in, and it prohibits them from actually getting employment.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Unfinished business, item number 16, county administration, a resolution adopting Stafford County's 2020 General Assembly Legislative Program, Proposed Resolution R19-237. Mr. Toigo.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Anthony Toigo, Constituent and Legislative Affairs Officer. Back today with part two of our legislative program discussion. So the Board today is asked to consider adoption of Proposed Resolution R19-237, a resolution adopting the Board's 2020 General Assembly Program. Staff is just seeking guidance from the Board at this point about the contents of the program, what it should look like, what are our top initiatives, et cetera. At your dais, I've handed out a summary sheet. It's a one-pager, front and back, just detailing the draft program as it stands currently. This is the same update that is sent to the Legislative Committee, well, to all the Board members, I should say, every week during the General Assembly session. So based on our discussion at the last meeting, some edits were made to the program, which I've denoted in your background report, but for the public's benefit, there's four big edits, under auxiliary deputies of updated language and executive summary of that initiative, to reflect office replacement in all three elementary schools, as well as the program's anticipated future growth needs. Under timbering regulations, I inadvertently forgot to include the replanting requirement. I did catch that. It's in there now. For Wide Water State Park, we've heard some conflicting information still from DCR. The cost likely is in the neighborhood of about $10 million for build-out. However, we felt it was better to just not include a cost in the background report, just in case, just so we have some flexibility in the event that that number ends up being higher or lower. And then lastly, the item Ms. Baumke identified, nicotine vapor products, local ability to regulate. This is a position, a new position, under public safety on Page 30, just expressing support for localities to have the ability to regulate vape products in public buildings. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Ms. Mauer?
Yeah, one of the things that we talked about is the sunsetting of the CSA 4%. I believe it's a 4% cap that was in the budget last year. Are we going to be adding that, ensuring that they continue that 4% cap?
We certainly could add it, yes, if the Board would like to.
Yeah, that one's critically important, especially considering where we have been and where we are now on CSA funding. But it is sunsetting this year. It's like 4% or 2%. There was a cap, and we went from 10% to 15% increases to something that we could actually manage as an organization.
We could add that to the public day school item in the background.
Any other questions? Mr. Dudenheffer?
The legislative process that we've been going through here in Stafford is now basically a year-round process of what we're doing. It wasn't that long ago where it was kind of haphazard, what we did going to Richmond. And the proof of the work that's being done is in the tracking and the way that we deal with this. So I want to thank you, Anthony, for the work that you've done and your contribution to the overall effort. Having worked in Richmond, I know that it's a moving target. Your job becomes extremely difficult for eight weeks in the winter, and I want you to know that we're, and I've talked with many other Board members on this and many other things. I can't tell you how thankful we are that you're there, and we look forward to working with you, and thank you for the work on this legislative agenda here. I think it's terrific.
Thank you, sir. And I can't thank Julia Hammond enough for helping me onboard to this role, as well as all of our staff who...
I would have thanked Julia's name, but as I get older, I couldn't remember her last name, so I figured better just to leave it out. But thank you. It's a team effort.
It is a team effort.
What we do down in Richmond, we have a consultant who is down there 24/7. She provides an incredible amount of insight, and believe me, there are a lot of backroom deals and a lot of subcommittee meetings and things that we just can't physically be down there for, but she keeps us informed of everything that we need to know. She tells us insights into things that aren't public. Believe me, there's a lot of stuff that goes on in legislation that the public never, ever sees. In fact, if they did see it, they would be very disappointed in how the process works, having worked there myself. So Julia, thank you very much, too, for your work and effort on this.
Ms. Baumke?
Yeah, and I just wanted to say, this is the first time ever in Stafford County history that we've actually tied our legislative program to all of our priorities that are in our strategic plan. So you don't see anything in here that's just hanging out there. Everything is identified as something in our strategic plan, and that's your success, Mr. Foley, in bringing this to the Board and making us have a strategic plan and tying it all together. So that's really neat. It's a big accomplishment for the Board.
Anthony did that all on his own, believe it or not.
Thank you, guys.
Any other questions? Ms. Mauer.
Okay, and just one final clarification on the teacher pay consistent with the national average. And wording on this is critically important, and I understand below, we have opposition to unfunded mandates, but we're talking about introducing legislation to ensure public school teacher salaries are at minimum consistent with the national average. Can we change the wording on that to ensure that funding for teacher salaries are at minimum consistent with the national average? Because I would hate for them to dictate to us that teacher salaries should be at the national average, and we have to come up with the money. So we need to ensure that we say funding of our teacher salaries are at the national average. This is critically important, and I recognize we have opposition to unfunded mandates below, but when we're introducing legislation, we need to make sure that we're clear on that.
Absolutely.
Last comment is if you've seen Ms. Mauer, that the state is very good at passing legislation and passing the cost down to us, and most of the teachers' pay raises that have come over the last several years have been mostly at the cost of property taxes for the people locally. The state doesn't like taking money out of their tax revenues, even though they advertise that they do.
Any other comments or questions? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Please cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes seven to zero. Anthony, thank you and Julia for all you do. It means a great deal.
Appreciate it.
We're going to have our legislative dinner on the 26th?
21st.
21st, I'm sorry. Glad you corrected me. 21st. That'll be here in ABC upstairs, I assume. Thank you very much. Item number 17, finance and budget. Budget and appropriate schools' lease proceeds to support an emergency, oh, I'm sorry, energy performance contract, proposed resolution R-19-216. No emergency, folks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alex Espinoza, chief financial officer. Staff is recommending the board budget and appropriate lease proceeds in the amount of $10,650,651 to the schools to support energy performance contract. The contract is structured to guarantee energy savings, that there are energy savings that are sufficient to pay for the financing costs of the project. This item was brought before the board on July 2, 2019. Since that time, the solicitation for the lease financing has been completed, and the contract has been approved by the school board at their October 8 meeting, contingent on board of supervisors appropriation. So we are recommending approval of the budget and appropriation schools. Staff is here to answer any specific questions you might have about their project.
Any questions? No, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Cohen. Do I have a second? I have a second by Ms. Bomke. Any discussion? Hearing none. Cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Item 18, fire and rescue and sheriff, discuss public safety salary scale. Sheriff Decatur and Chief Cardello.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Joe Cardello, county fire chief. A few months ago, we were given direction to work as two departments, a fire and rescue and sheriff's department, on the exploration of a public safety pay scale. Since then, we formed teams, Sheriff Decatur and I have formed teams that have worked with county human resources and the county administrator's office to get that done. And we've come up with a form of a grade and step system. Today, the board's asked to consider the structure of the new public safety pay system. What is a grade and step system? It's a pay structure where grades define the pay for levels of responsibility and authority. Typical movement among grades is based on promotion or, at certain times, career development. Steps define increments of pay within a grade. Movement is based on time and/or performance. So if an employee remains in the same role, upward salary movement continues along the steps for that grade, usually at the rate of one per year of service.
So the grades are based on a current general county, the current pay scale that we have right now. So what we did is we took the current structure and then built it from there, and the grades that are on the pay structure are normalized to 7 percent between the grades, with the exception of a career development where there's 3 percent. And then there is a difference between deputy sheriff one and investigator one, where our deputy sheriff in field operations and investigator one, and that's a 10 percent. And then the steps are 3 percent. There's a differential point to midpoint, so when you reach midpoint, it's 3 percent, and then beyond that, it would be 2.5 percent until you reach the maximum. And if you look on the pay scale, there is a green color there that depicts where the midpoint is, and then a tan or yellowish area to the end that will depict what the maximum amount is. And then all the career development in the sheriff's office, including emergency communications, it's all been standardized for the time requirements, and the time requirements for completion would be two years, five years, and eight years. And then for career development, we had to add some additional grades in order to prevent people in particular positions from encroaching on other grades. So we had to add three grades for animal control, two for the courts, and then two for field operations, three for communications, and one for the investigator positions.
In addition, the probationary firefighter grade was removed, and the recruit firefighter grade was adjusted to make it more competitive. The deputy fire marshal, we're still, that's a work in progress. We still have some work to do to get that fire marshal's office where it should be placed in the scale. The advanced life support incentive pay will be transitioned from a, to a stipend-based system, and this is going to take approximately 10 years.
Okay, and then for the sheriff grades, from deputy sheriff to the position of major, we looked at the comparative other organizations and departments, and we moved them up one position higher to be more comparative to them. And then the sheriff, fire, and rescue, and the emergency communications, all of it is on the pay scale that you're looking at for clarity, and it's easier to understand by having it all there. There's a number of ways you can break it down as well. And then, of course, what does the pay scale look like? I think you already have that in front of you. And then for the public safety competitive jurisdictions, these are Prince William, Loudon, Arlington, Alexandria, and Spotsylvania. And there was a number of great questions that came through the public safety committee meeting today, and this is our second review of this with you in the open meeting and also with our public safety committee meeting. So what we're trying to do is, it's a work in progress, and we're trying to take that information, and even the information from today, and take that back. So we're continuing to work on it, so.
Ms. Mauer.
One of the questions is, and I can kind of see that, I believe it's answered, in the fire and rescue recruit category, because I doubt you're going to have a recruit at 28 years. Otherwise, we're doing something wrong. But are we, when we hire somebody, is that approximate tenure also include years of experience? Let's say we hire somebody from Spotsylvania, and they have five years of experience, would they come in at the 55 to 26?
Currently, at the lower ranks, a recruit firefighter, for example, would not, we don't allow for that. The upper ranks, the command level ranks, we do account for years of service in their previous career.
Okay. Is that something we're going to potentially look at?
We are.
In this next phase?
In future hires, yes.
Because it's a lot less expensive to hire somebody with years of experience.
Yes.
Okay.
And then looking at slide 10, it just gives you an indication of who we're comparing to, and as you go down the different categories, you'll look at the pay scale, what type they have, and there's different types of pay scales. And then as you move over to the right, you'll look at the percentage in between each step of what they're doing. So it kind of gives you an idea. And what we're trying to do, and as I mentioned in the public safety committee meeting, we're not trying to get to where their wages are, but we're trying to be like them as far as being able to compete and comparing ourselves to them, because if we can get as close to them, you know, as our competitors, as we can, with the structure and the way we do things, the better it will be for us, and to keep people from driving through Stafford to go up north to another place of employment. And then...
So when we compared certain select positions, deputy sheriff one, firefighter, EMT, and communications officer three, when we compared all of them with the jurisdictions that we compete with, we found that our personnel are approximately equated to average for those grades in other departments. So the deputy sheriff, the firefighter EMTs, and the communications officer three.
And then the advantages to a public safety step system, and we've talked about it a number of times. One, it gives you some predictability there for progression for pay, you know, as long as the revenue is there for the pay. And it helps us to eliminate compression, which has been a big problem for all law enforcement and public safety, you know. And then it's able, it allows us to effectively communicate that having a trained employee and someone with experience is valued, and then it allows us to directly compare, as I mentioned earlier, to some of our other competitors. And then the next slide is just a timeline. And as I mentioned earlier, I know we have a lot of questions to answer, and we're still working through it, and we had some valuable feedback in the earlier meeting today, and we're going to take that and work to try to answer some of those questions and make things, make some progress with it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Mauer.
Just overarching, what's the budget impact?
Well, we're still working through that. Don't know exactly right now what that's going to be, but we have a plan for, I think, the next meeting. Mr. Foley actually addressed that very well at the public safety committee meeting, our plans to still kind of crunch numbers and look at some implementation strategies, and then present that to you at the next meeting.
Okay. And conceptually, this is critically important. I don't know why we went off the step system. I understand there was a movement at one point. Being the former wife of a police officer, I recognize the importance of this step system, so I'm glad to see it coming back.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Gentlemen, thank you so much, and I want to just, it's rare that the two of you come up here together, but thank you very much for what you're doing for our community.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Believe me when I tell you, we feel very safe.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That concludes our unfinished business. Moving to new business, item number 20. Fire and rescue, discuss fire and rescue strategic plan. Chief Cardello can come on back down.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So I'm here this afternoon to talk about our strategic plan. And first, I want to talk about the process we went through to achieve the plan. We recognize the need for direction and focus within the department. We followed the Center for Public Safety Excellence guidelines for community-driven strategic planning. That was very important, and we had a lot of stakeholder involvement. We had career and volunteer representation. We had community business leaders. We had regular citizens participate in the process. So we began last November, and we had planning sessions, more than a dozen of them, over six months. In those sessions, we gathered stakeholder input. We performed SWOT analysis. We talked about mission, vision, core values, the core programs, which are the services that we provide and the partners that we, the agencies that we partner with. And then we talked about, we identified service gaps which prevent us from being as efficient as we can in providing the service that we know we need to. So after the large group work was complete, we broke into smaller groups, and the result of the small group work was that we came up with six focus areas or strategic initiatives that we really felt were the most important things that we need to focus on for the next three years. There are emergency response services, infrastructure, health and wellness of all of our members, professional development, communications, and community risk reduction. Each of those initiatives was broken down into goals and specific objectives, and then we had critical tasks assigned to each objective to help us reach those goals. So the new mission of our department is the Stafford County Fire and Rescue Department is a passionate organization dedicated to improving the quality of life of our citizens and safeguarding our community by providing responsive emergency services and proactive risk reduction services. Our vision is we will build a premier fire and rescue department by becoming metric-driven, keeping pace with growth and technology, and by creating a culture of community-focused service. Our core values, integrity, pride, service, courage, and respect. The foundation of the plan, some of the major parts of it, developing a standards of response coverage document is going to be the biggest key to this. It will, in some way or another, touch every one of the objectives of our plan. We will address the facilities and our infrastructure issues through planning. One very important part that came out of our sessions was everyone felt it was extremely important to improve the mental and physical health of all personnel, career, and volunteer. We need to really work...
Ms. Mauer.
So one of the concerns that I have had brought to my attention is the lung cancer or the cancer potential because of the air cleaning mechanisms and the trucks run within that. Is that being added? Are you guys looking at that, including that in part of your plan?
The vehicle exhaust?
Yes.
Yes, we're almost complete with every station.
Okay. Including the volunteer?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Recruitment and retention is, as you are aware, is a very big issue, especially on the volunteer side, but also on the career side.
So I want to go back to that a little bit, and I appreciate the vehicle exhaust, but there's, in your line of work, you guys are exposed to a number of carcinogens, and you are regularly looking at that and making that a, this is important to me.
Sure.
A component part of your strategic plan.
Yes.
I appreciate the vehicle exhaust, but from an OSHA health and safety perspective, it's not just the vehicle exhaust, it's the exposure that you're getting to. The fentanyl now, whenever you guys are now being deployed on some of these drug overdoses, that is just, God, you got to be just in the vicinity. That is going to be a component part.
Yes.
Okay.
Things like second sets of PPE for everyone, so that they can take the dirty, contaminated gear and put it aside and get a fresh set of gear. Things like that are called for in the plan. So, sure.
There is, just for perspective, there's the high-level goals that he's talking about, and if you dig into the plan, you see some objectives and different things that they'll be developing to get at that very specifically.
I just want to make sure that it's on your screen.
Yes, ma'am.
I assumed it was.
Yes, ma'am.
It's just...
Health and safety.
Health and safety.
Physical and mental is extremely important. We are going to make more effort to increase our fire prevention and community outreach efforts, things like smoke alarm campaigns, stop the bleed, CPR, things like that. We know that we need to improve upon those, and that's important to us. Prepare for an ISO review, which, as we all know, has the potential to affect tax rates, I'm sorry, insurance rates. Begin the process of becoming an accredited fire department. That's, to me, that's very important, and I think we can get there. It's going to take a lot of work, but again, the standard of response coverage document and outlining everything that we're going to do as a department, that's going to take care of so many of these things and set us up to be able to check these boxes. So the plan calls for the formation of seven committees or work groups. It's very important that in these committees and work groups, we have volunteer and career participation. Each objective has a timeline for completion, and it's assigned to a specific command, so we can hold ourselves accountable. And every six months, we'll get together to review the plan and make sure that we're on track. I think the important thing here is it's a living document, so if we need to make adjustments on the fly, we can do that. So in summary, our strategic plan that we've developed will define our mission, vision, and core values. It will identify the most important goals that we have for the next three years, and it will define objectives and strategies necessary for us to achieve those goals, and importantly, establishes performance measures to keep us on track.
Ms. Mauer.
So I want to thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you, and you've really taken this department in a new direction, and I appreciate your leadership and your guidance.
Thanks.
Any other questions, Chief? Any other questions for the chief? Thank you very much, chief. I echo Ms. Mauer's comments. You know, when, I think I can speak for all the board that before you got here, a good portion of our calls were from disgruntled volunteers. I haven't had a call in over a year. And I attribute that to you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Number 21, Public Works Transportation, discuss options for the National Capital Region Transportation, Transportation Planning Board. Mr. Towery.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. The, the Infrastructure Committee actually talked about this item at the October 1st meeting. So I'll just note the changes that we've made to the package since then and then open up for any questions. The first change is under the potential drawbacks that we noted with joining the TPB. After some discussions with FAMPO, we noted that, at least right now, the thought is that the FAMPO region would be moving to submitting for smart scale applications under typology B, which is at least at this point, thought to potentially be more favorable for Stafford County. Staying with the TPB, we would likely be submitting under typology A, which is also what Northern Virginia region and the Hampton Roads region submit under. That is currently the typology we've been submitting under for smart scale. The second one is under the various considerations. We added in item number three, which was the suggestion about the possibility of splitting Stafford to have the northern part join the TPB and the remaining part remain within FAMPO. So that is another item for consideration that the board could consider. And then the biggest change is under the questions that we have proposed and put forward for consultants to consider. The board did ask, or the Infrastructure Committee rather, did ask that staff reach out and make contact with consultants that could potentially help with getting through these questions. We have worked very hard over the past two weeks to identify consultants. We did put out a three-day request for some, to eight consultants. And we received one response back, which was that they did not have the ability to accomplish this task in that time. So in reserve, we have continued working with VDOT and the TPB very closely. They have these questions and they are working to get us answers to those questions, hopefully, that are responsive to the board by the November 6th timeline. And this item will be back for the board on November 6th.
Ms. Mauer.
So I understand a lot of this is written in the board docs and I really appreciate the extensive amount of research you guys have done on this. I think this started with a, an innocent question by Mr. Dudenheffer that has really revealed some areas where we can improve our funding. But for the purposes of the public, do you mind just an overarching kind of timeline of, of what happened so, so the public has a better understanding?
Sure, so.
Four or five bullet points.
Right, so back late in the summer, the board became aware, well, there was a letter that came from the TPB to the FAMPO board stating that it was time to update the MOU that FAMPO and the TPB have that allows FAMPO to administer the various TPB functions for Stafford County on the TPB's behalf.
And this is funding that comes to Stafford County as a result of North Stafford being more densely populated?
That's correct. North Stafford is part of the urban area that was designated. And there are certain funding that comes as a part of that to various MPOs.
Not to be, not to be confused with all of North Stafford. It really is the area of heavily populated North Stafford. So far out Rock Hill. What? On the heart of that, absolutely. Garrisonville District is totally in that. But I'm talking about the extreme rural areas aren't considered part of that, so.
That's correct. So after receiving that letter, the board was asked, or actually the board heard a presentation from the TPB that discussed the possibility of what would have to happen if Stafford were to say, "We want to join the TPB instead of remaining in FAMPO under this MOU agreement." And upon, after that meeting, staff was directed to work with the TPB as well as VDOT to answer some of these questions, understand a little bit more what it would look like joining the TPV, TPB versus staying in FAMPO. And that's when some of the questions about the CMAC and RSTP funding and other items, of course, came up. At this point, the, the, the rough numbers that we've been told by VDOT is, I believe, and I'll do this off the top of my head for a minute. I believe it's $4.1 million a year. I'm going to just make sure I get this right, since I'm saying it publicly. Give me one moment. $4.1 million a year roughly in CMAC and RSTP funding and approximately, with approximately 3.5 million of that being generated by the North Stafford urban area. And so the questions before the board at this point are to whether or not we should continue forward in the current status with FAMPO or if perhaps the MOU should be modified in some sort to address some of those funding questions or if perhaps we should join the TPB.
Ms. Mauer.
And it was discovered that potentially we are not getting the amount of funding potentially that Stafford should be getting as a result of our relationship with FAMPO. Is, is that a fair assessment as we, we were crunching the numbers?
Yeah, I, I think that when you look at the amount of dollars that are currently coming because of Stafford's involvement, there's certainly a, a big question about how much return Stafford is receiving back on that.
And the reason this is important is because, you know, oftentimes Northern Virginia gets a little fussy that they are a tax contributor and other jurisdictions are tax receivers. And if we are, if we are generating those taxes within Stafford County, given the conditions of our roads, this is an important consideration for this board. We should be at least receiving what we were supposed to be getting, correct?
Yes, and I, I think that, I think that's a fair assessment and that's one of the questions that we're trying to get at the heart at here through this discussion. And certainly, when you work as a region, as you're working with FAMPO right now, there are considerations there as well as certainly considerations to joining potentially the TPB as a region.
Okay. And I want to thank you and I want to thank Mr. Dudenheffer and the rest of the FAMPO board members for digging into this issue. I think this was, it's been elucidating.
Mr. Dudenheffer.
You were given a hard task, Jason, and we're still not, we're still not there. Just for the benefit of the other board members, I, I want everyone to know that we are still in fact-finding mode. We are not even close to having the data points we need to make a decision. And I think the, the data, the hard data that we, we uncover, the, you know, the written policies, the law, what is said is going to tell us where we should be. And I can tell you, we've shaken up the region pretty much on the thought of this little Benny, that their benefit, that they're receiving at our expense could come to a screeching halt. So they're not real happy I met with FAMPO this morning. But what I, what we're working on, and I had a discussion this morning with Jason and Mike, is that no longer can we say, well, V, I mean, we're already getting multiple different answers from VDOT and FAMPO as to how much money we're talking about and where it comes from. That's why every response needs to be in writing. It has to be, it can't be, "We think," or "Someone in Richmond told me." It has to be based on such and such a code or such and such a policy by, by VDOT that is applied across the Commonwealth. You know, until we have that kind of, of data points, we're going to have a hard time trying to, trying to make a decision. I can tell you, the local VDOT office is worried, now FAMPO's worried. I met with the city councilman from Fredericksburg this morning, they're all worried. I'll just, for, for an example of what Ms. Mauer was saying, RSTP funding, which is funding that would come to and is generated by North Stafford, went to building a trail that connected the city and Spotsylvania County and not to expanding the six lanes courthouse road, I mean Garrisonville Road and, and the other projects. So the people who are generating the money aren't, it's going to other stuff because of this arrangement that was made many years ago between the TPB and FAMPO. And that needs to be completely vetted in facts and then a decision made by this board on what direction we want to go. There are, it, it's extremely complicated. I mean, Jason did his best under the guidelines of trying to do it in five bullet points. That's an impossible task. It's very, very complicated. There are a lot of moving parts in it. You know, the FAMPO, we're one of three municipalities and if we went to the TPB, they already have 38 members. So you go from being a, a big fish in a little pond to being a little fish in a big pond. How do you, how does that work? Could we still be better off in how we do it? How, do we split Stafford in half? I, I, I don't see a, a road for that to happen. I don't think that that would be in the best interest of the county as a whole. So my, my only point though is to other board members is the, we're still in fact-finding. And unfortunately, we do have a relatively short time fuse. And by our first meeting in November, we're going to have to make some hard decisions based on the information we do have. But they're good at holding out on information and slow trickling it to you until you bump up against the deadline and you have to make a decision. And it might not be the right decision because they've dragged their feet, so. But thanks a lot. I appreciate you guys dealing with this thing.
Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Jason and Mike. You, there was a lot of good information sent to us. I just want to get my head wrapped around a couple of things if I could. And you don't have to do it now, you know me, send it to me later. But in everything, we see that we keep getting the phrase that the T, the TPB is more structured. But I'm, like Ms. Bomke, I like to see things more visual. What do we mean by more structured, by more loose, you see? Yeah, unfortunately. So, you know, so I just want to have my head wrapped around when you keep saying it's more structured, how many hoops, what is it doing versus what I've sat through? Second thing is, is that there are three options. I know Mr. Dudenheffer said, you know, the, the one option is that do we split the baby in half? The one is stay where we are and the other is go totally TCB. But a few minutes ago, you're, you sort of eliminated the second option. So I just want to make sure, there are three. It just, so probably, I, I would be curious to just see the pluses and minuses of all three options clearly. I mean, I've, I've seen snippets, but I, and I get it, but at the infrastructure meeting, there were all these different things saying, well, we get some things because we're in FAMPO, but then we don't. So the more crystallized will make it easier for us when we make a decision. And then lastly, regardless of what we do, we do need to make a new MOU at some point. And so is it feel, physiologically or theoretically possible that we continue with the status quo for a year under the existing MOU while we actually get the information? And at that point also, I think Mr. Dudenheffer was the one that brought this up at Infrastructure, we'll have the new census information. The new census information might throw us in a totally different area, which would throw us into the TCB or the TPB.
Let me, let me address that point real quick.
But I'm just saying, if, maybe there's something down the road, no pun intended, that will alter this, that if we just, if we're not, if it's not possible to get a consultant and it's hard to get the information, maybe we stay with the status quo until we get it in a more measured way. And so that's sort of why I'm curious that way. Go ahead, Mr. Dudenheffer.
Just if I could, Mr. Chairman. First off, I, I don't think we have eliminated any of the, the possibilities. At least that's not been my, my discussion. We may think that in our own mind, but we're not basing that on fact yet because we don't have all, all the facts and stuff. What was the last thing you talked about? Yeah, the census, the issue with the census is, yes, the census is going to be done next year, but they wouldn't, the, the data wouldn't flow through the system until about 2022. So it's not an immediate six months or 10 months from now, it's two to three years from now, so. But there was discussion this morning in a meeting I was at that we may, there are technical issues with the MOU as it stands now that don't allow, or it's not in complete compliance with the new federal laws and regulations. So that's what brought it up in the first place, is that the TPB is directly responsible for us, whether they delegate that to FAMPO or not. We're still, they still are ultimately responsible. And even though in their big picture, which includes the whole Washington DC and big parts of Maryland, we would be a very small part. But if we are, if, if anything in our area is not in compliance with federal law, the feds will hold up funding for, for projects in the entire TPB area. So they are very, very concerned about that. So we may, and, and again, that's why I was saying, we'll wait till November, our meeting in November. But we may have to make an initial step at changing to make sure the initial MPO right now complies with federal law so that we can meet the deadline, which is one June. And by being structured, if you heard their process that we have to go through to get this thing approved and the legal staff and the hoops that we have to go through all the way along, June the 1st is going to be a challenge to start with. So I, again, there, there's still too many open-ended questions that, that we haven't been able to come up with information and answers.
Ms. Shelton, then Ms. Mauer, then Ms. Bomke. We're going to have to wrap it up, folks. We need to be upstairs at 5:00.
Okay. Mr. Towery, I have a couple of those questions and I'm thinking that we don't have the answer. We had asked for an extension for the note to November 6th. Are we going to get it, get an extension so we can delay our decision?
Until November 6th.
Till after November 6th.
Until after November 6th. We have posed that question to the TPB and we have not received a clear answer. So we are still under the assumption that at this point, November 6th is, is our, our goal.
Okay. My next question had to do with CMAC and RSTP funding. You had reported that was, not you, but staff has reported that it was between four and 16 million dollars that we've not lost, but have not allocated to Stafford. We were looking for a final number on that. Did we get that or are we still waiting for that too?
We still, in terms of, I'm sorry, are you referring to the 13, the 10.24 on CMAC that was discussed under?
10, that 10 is.
At this point, the best numbers we have on CMAC and RSTP are what was presented in the Infrastructure Committee meeting. And that's what we have from VDOT.
Okay.
There has been, as Mr. Dudenheffer alluded to, there has been some shifting from VDOT and FAMPO and the TPB on where those numbers are and what they would or wouldn't be. So that is murky.
And in the interest of time, I want to ask about the differences and why we think it's going to make a difference between category A and B? Because if it is more structured and it provides a better value for Stafford, I'm really interested in seeing that. So I'm expecting that you're going to provide that to us, right?
Correct. The main difference between category A and category B is congestion. And so historically, we haven't scored as well, since you're in a category with other municipalities, areas that have obviously heavy congestion, Hampton Roads, Northern Virginia. Competitively, it just hasn't been what we thought it would have been, being, even though we certainly have significant congestion here. Category B does not weigh congestion as heavily. Other factors come in.
Ms. Bomke and then Ms. Mauer.
Ms. Shelton covered mine, thank you.
Ms. Mauer.
So just for the board's edification, I think it's important for you to know that, that following federal law is critical to our funding. And when we received notification from our federal review, the chair at the time from Spotsylvania essentially told the federal investigator to pound sand. So this kind of adds into that, that mix outside of FAMPO approval. And so, so that gives me a little bit of pause as well. And I think it's important that the entire board know that.
Just for clarification, was that the chairman of the Spotsylvania Board or the chairman of FAMPO?
It was the chairman of FAMPO who came, was a member of the Spotsylvania Board.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much, Jason. We appreciate it. We look forward to November the 6th. At this time, we are going to recess until 5:30. We will reconvene in room ABC for a joint meeting with the school board, which is open for the public, to the public. After that, we will come back at 7:00 for. After that, we will come back at seven o'clock for public hearings.
Mr. Chairman, just wanted to note for the board that dinner is actually ready at five, so if you want to go early before the five-thirty.
Okay, thank you. To rise. Ms. Shelton will lead us in the invocation, and I will lead us in the pledge.
Please bow your heads. Above all these things is love. We on the Board of Supervisors love Stafford so much that we're doing this job. You are here because you care just as well as we, or we wouldn't have done this. God, look into our hearts and guide us in our words and to do your will. Bless all those who haven't asked as well as those who have asked you for help. Touch them with your love as you touch us as we guide and make decisions on behalf of not just you, but all the people here in Stafford County. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we're going to have a presentation by our high school drum majors. Every year, about the first week of November, they have a huge event that promotes getting food and money for the Food Bank, and is quite successful. And tonight, they're going to come forward and give you a little information on it and tell you when it is and what you need to do and what you need to bring.
Good evening. On behalf of the Band Parents Association of Stafford County, five high schools, and their outstanding marching band drum majors, Lauren Black from Brookpoint, Carolyn Pearson and Catherine Chown from Colonial Forge, Nolan Small from Mountain View High School, Thomas Nichols from North Stafford High School, and Lauren Sarette and Dustin Biggers from Stafford High School, we would like to personally invite you to our Ninth Annual Band Together to Fight Hunger event.
Hi there. So we are here tonight to personally invite each of you to join us on Monday evening, November fourth, at seven PM at Mountain View High School for our Ninth Annual Band Together to Fight Hunger event. Gates open at five-thirty PM, and admission is completely free with a donation of a non-perishable food item or monetary donation. The first band performs at seven PM, so you'll have plenty of time to go enjoy a dinner from the concession stand, which also donates a portion of its proceeds to, from the night's event. Band Together to Fight Hunger showcases of the talented musicians from all of Stafford County's high schools. This is the only time during the year where all five high school marching bands perform in concerts, not in competition. This night also gives us all the opportunity to give back to all the communities that we live in.
The Band Together to Fight Hunger is a free showcase, allowing anyone to attend. All you need is to bring any non-perishable food item or monetary donation. Last year, with the support of our business partners and attendees, we were able to provide over forty-six thousand meals to residents of our surrounding communities. Because this was the largest donation ever raised in the history of the event, and was also eleven thousand meals, more than the last year's intended goal, this year, we are hoping to achieve that same milestone.
All food items and money raised at the Band Together to Fight Hunger event are promptly donated to the Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank, serving Caroline, Fredericksburg, King George, Spotsylvania, Locust Grove, and Stafford. Because of their wide reach, the Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank is able to reach thirty-five Stafford community partners.
By partnering with the Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank, we are able to reach sixty-one different food pantries throughout our regional, local communities. This food bank is the storehouse for the food and other household products collected, allowing donations to be distributed to our local food pantries for direct distribution to our neighbors in need.
We need your help to achieve our goal on November fourth. Every donation goes to the Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank in support of Stafford's seventeen food pantries, three of which are mobile food pantries, and sixteen school-age program pantries.
Not only does the Band Together to Fight Hunger feature each of one of our marching bands performing their own individual shows, but after the presentation of donations to the Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank, we will end the night with our grand finale. All five of our marching bands will band together to play one single coordinated piece. That's right, over four hundred musicians playing together, taking the field, standing side by side to fight hunger.
We look forward to seeing you all on Monday, November fourth, at Mountain View High School's football field. And don't forget to bring a non-perishable food item to donate to the Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank. Thank you all for your time tonight and your continued support for all of our school programs. Thank you.
Detail, present, arms. Order, arms. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All of us up here have attended this event in the past, and I can tell you from experience, it's a great event. So if you want some great entertainment and you want to help out your community, November the fourth, at Mountain View High School. Tonight, we have a very special presentation, a proclamation that'll be given by Mr. Cohen, and I won't steal his thunder, but this is an amazing thing that happened in one of our schools. And we wanted to recognize those individuals that were involved.
If they, the gentleman and the young gentleman can come on up.
Deputy Brown and Aiden Finney.
One of the things that we have been trying to do is get people into the schools, have resource officers, and even in the elementary schools. And so what we did, thanks to Sheriff Decatur and this board working together, we got school protection officers for three elementary schools. And Mr. Brown was newly into Ferry Farm, and one of the two main functions is to take care of our children and to build a rapport with these young adults and children so that they know to come up to them. And that is exactly what happened. This wonderful young man here went up to the school protection officer when there was a student in need, a child in need, and they worked together to save a life. And so we wanted to give great recognition to the brave efforts by this young man and by the deputy as well. So we have these long-winded proclamations, you both get one, so you get a gift. Ooh, I know. It's so exciting. All right, so it says, whereas Stafford County's Board of Supervisors and the Stafford County Sheriff's Office created the School Protection Officer Program, authorizing three full-time officers at the elementary school level, in an effort to better protect Stafford County's schoolchildren, and whereas Deputy Kevin P. Brown is a new school protection officer at Ferry Farm Elementary, and whereas one of Deputy Brown's duties is to monitor the cafeteria during lunch period, which he deserves an award for anyways. Whereas, on October second, two thousand nineteen, first grader Aiden R. Finney, yay, alerted Deputy Brown of his friend who was choking and needed help, and whereas Deputy Brown performed the Heimlich maneuver on the child, clearing his airway, and quickly made, this child quickly made a full recovery, and whereas, without the quick thinking of Aiden Finney and the professional actions of Deputy Brown, the outcome for this choking child could have been different. And whereas, these two good citizens and members of Ferry Farm Elementary School selfishly worked together to help and support a fellow community member, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Stafford County Board of Supervisors, on this fifteenth day of October two thousand nineteen, that it be and hereby recognizes Ferry Farm Elementary Student Aiden R. Finney and Deputy Kevin P. Brown for their actions in saving a life at Ferry Farm Elementary School student. Congratulations, sir. There you go. They're going to take pictures of you. Look at that, cool. You got it? Hold it with both hands. Anything you want to say? You want some cookies, too? Yeah, I know, really, cool. Deputy? And then?
As he indicated, Aiden is truly the hero here. He walked right up to me in the cafeteria, and thankfully, because of our school protection officer program that was adopted by this board and the sheriff, I was on hand to take the action that was needed. But Aiden's truly the one that did the work.
Earlier this year, I attended a leadership seminar at Ebenezer Baptist Church, or United Methodist Church, and one of the speakers, they spoke about what happens during a crisis. When something bad happens, whether it's a car crash, a fire, some sort of an emergency, eighty percent of the people just stand and do nothing. They just watch or just don't react. Ten percent of the people actually hinder the investigation or stand in the way or do something negative. The other ten percent, they're the leaders, they're the ones that take charge of the situation. Fortunately, our community has people like Aiden and Deputy Brown that took charge in this situation and made sure this young man survived this incident. We could not be prouder of their actions that day. So on behalf of the Sheriff Decatur, who was unable to be here tonight, I wanted to present them each with one of our recognition coins, which has our core values on the back. And also, I understand that Aiden is interested in a career in law enforcement, so I also wanted to present him with one of our junior deputy badges. So on behalf of Sheriff Decatur, thank them very much. There you go. And this is for you. This is for you.
Deputy Brown, before you leave, could you share with the audience what Aiden told you when you asked him where he learned how to do that?
Certainly. The day following the incident, I saw Aiden in the lunchroom, and I was just always interested in how he knew to come and get an adult when he observed what he did. His friend was clearly in distress. I figured he had to have learned it from another adult, Cub Scout pack, something. So I went up to his table and said, Aiden, hey, I really appreciate what you did for your buddy and for helping Deputy Brown out, but where did you learn that? Did your parents teach you that? Did you learn that in Cub Scouts? And he just responded, kids just know things like that.
Thank you, sir. You all good?
Thank you very much. This time, we're going to do presentations by the public. I do have one speaker card. I'll remind you that this is presentations on anything you want to discuss except public hearings that are on the agenda tonight. If you want to discuss a public hearing item, please wait until the public hearing. When you come to the podium, please state your name and address, unless you're a student. If you're a student, state your name only. You will have three minutes to make the presentation. When the green light comes on, that means you start. The yellow light means you have about a minute left, and the red light means wrap up your remarks. I have one speaker card, and that is Rebecca Chung.
Hello, members of the board. Sorry, I'm not as interesting as Aiden, and I won't be. The information that I am presenting to you all today is, oh, my name is Rebecca Chung. Sorry, I forgot to say that. The information I'm giving you all today is from our first survey that we took, which went from May twenty-first to May fifth, to June fifth. The information, the questions were a little bit choppy as we had just experienced our loss and did not know how to write our thoughts in the best way possible. This is the result of our first survey that we took, and we are compiling the results of our second survey and hope to have them back to you all by the time you guys meet next time and when we meet. So the first question that we took was based on a list of where you could fill it in yourself and explain what road do you, in Stafford County, do you believe needs improvement, if you believe there's any improvement at all. And the top five that we got were Kellogg Mill, Poplar, Stephanica, Mountain View Road, and Whining Creek Road. We ended up totaling one thousand two hundred and thirty responses, and the total results that we received on this question were one thousand one hundred and fifty-seven, because some people opted to admit this question, so we lost a few responses there. And then we compiled that into a pie chart to show the roads that needed the most improvement based on percentage-wise. The next page that we took was how would people describe themselves, and we left this open for a click-in response, a multiple choice question, sorry. And we got all the responses to that as you must, you had to respond, and there was an other column. This other column only gave, I think, two percent of what the total is. I can give you those direct numbers if you would like to know all the other options that we had. And so we got mostly responses from student drivers as we took the survey through our school system. A lot of it was circulated via social media and other ways of communication that we talk with other high school students. And then we got mainly a lot of parents taking the survey as we posted it on Facebook. And we got responses from them and passengers, mainly students who don't drive but do get rides from A to B. And then based on the roads that came up in our first page, question one, we asked them, what conditions do you even think need to be fixed on these roads? And we left this as a multiple choice with a response for others. And we got blind spots, overgrown vegetation, lack of safety and signage, which are problems that are much easier to fix. While the bond referendum is important, this is simple, everyday problems. And then the number, the last question that we got, which was kind of shocking to us, was, have you ever been on a car accident on one of these roads? And we got two hundred and five responses as yes, although some of them listed as minor through other comments that you could leave, that we filtered and won't give to you all as some of them are personal, that two hundred and five out of one thousand two hundred and thirty said yes. So it's just a consideration of all this material that we are giving to you all, and we'll have more for you all next time. Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I know I speak for the whole board when I congratulate you on your perseverance on this.
Thank you.
We thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you.
That's the only speaker card I had. Is anyone else in the auditorium would like to speak on any subject other than a public
Paul Waldowski, Eight Picket Lane in the gerrymandered Rock Hill District. Eighteen years ago, Anthrax was discovered in the Hart Building as a letter was sent to Mr. Dashill and Mr. Leahy. Everyone remembers nine eleven, two thousand one, but I'm quite positive that I could not even use the eighty-twenty rule, that ninety-nine percent of you had no idea about ten fifteen, two thousand one. Now, we are in the twenty-first century, and if you saw a band together, they're going to be there the day before Election Day. What they didn't tell you, if it's a rainout, they'll be there on Veterans Day, November eleventh. And yet, you're going to meet the day after Election Day, according to what I heard this afternoon, which is the beginning of the lame duck session. Oh, my goodness. I'm really sorry. I normally put that on do not disturb. So to continue on another aspect of this afternoon, I heard about three options. And I always said there are always three options on everything. There's one side of the story, then there's the other side of the story, and then there's the truth. And three-way elections... In three-way elections, I finally got it to the people of the General Assembly, which you should bring up, because I'm tired of people getting elected either as district candidates or constitutional candidates. I haven't seen that part. But district candidates are getting in office without 50% of the vote plus one, which is a majority. Now, if I was to find a mentor in my life, it would have been my father. But when I looked at something, what happened in this 19 years of the 21st century where we're still teenagers? Marcus Limonis comes to mind because he always uses the three Ps: people, process, product. Man, it would be amazing if we'd get the right people, and processes are really systematic and mathematical, because math is a universal language, as is music. If you come see Band Together, you're gonna see an excellent product.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the chamber like to address the board on any issue or subject? Hearing none, I bring it back to the board. Tonight, we have two public hearings at the request of Ms. Mauer, whose district this is in. These two public hearings will be combined as they are for the same identical thing. First, to amend and reordain the Stafford County zoning ordinance by amending the profit conditions on Tax Map Parcel 19U-5, 19-57B, Zone B2 Urban Commercial Project known as Wawa Tech Parkway, proposed ordinance 1947. And second public hearing is approval request for a conditional use permit on that, for fuel sales on that same piece of property. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. Mr. Chairman, you summed up the gist of the applications. In particular, the site area is six acres in size for the zoning reclassification and approximately three acres in size for the conditional use permit. The applicant is Net Leasing Development LLC, and they're represented by Charlie Payne, Esquire, and it's located in the Rock Hill District. This is a map that shows the location of the property. The property is outlined in the blue lines. It's here, it's located at Garrisonville Road at the intersection of Tech Parkway and Furnace Road. The property is currently Zoned B2 Urban Commercial. It was zoned that way in 2008. You can see by the surrounding uses, we have a strip retail center immediately to the west. We have a number of office buildings to the north. To the south, we have another vehicle fueling station, as well as other retail uses along Garrisonville Road. And there's also a smattering of residential uses in existing A1 zoning classifications along this section of Garrisonville Road. As I mentioned earlier, the property was initially zoned in 2008. The concept for that development plan was that there would be a bank along the road frontage along Garrisonville Road in this location, and there would also be a three-story office building on the east side of the property. There would be an access point onto Garrisonville Road, as well as one onto Tech Parkway. As a point of reference, Tech Parkway is currently a signalized intersection with Furnace Road. This is an aerial photo showing the existing conditions on the property. The property is currently undeveloped with the exception of a existing single-family home located to the rear of the property, as well as a few outbuildings. These buildings currently are unoccupied and would be demolished with development of the property. One area of note, and I'll get to it a little bit in the presentation, is this aerial photo shows the traffic configuration at Furnace Road. You'll notice here that an existing lane on Furnace Road currently has striping hashed out, and that will eventually become a full-use lane. It was constructed with the shopping center to the east to accommodate left turns. At the time that that center was built, there was not warrants to meet the left turns, but now with this project, those warrants will be met and the lane restriction will be removed. This is the current generalized development plan. It's being proposed with both the conditional use permit and the proffer amendment. As you can see from this diagram, the application proposes a Wawa gas station in the front with 20 fueling stations under the canopy. Also, there would be a office or retail building located on the east side of the property, as shown in the previous concept plan, however the size of this building would be much smaller. The Planning Commission, when they were reviewing the application to public hearing, had some questions and concerns that were ultimately addressed through the conditions and the proffers, and I'll point that out to you here with this diagram. Specifically, they had questions and desire to see a pedestrian crosswalk located on Tech Parkway in this location by the entrance coming onto Tech Parkway, as well as completion of a crosswalk here along the entrance of Tech Parkway. The generalized development plan also shows a connection of a sidewalk along the entire frontage of the property and connection to a existing crosswalk on Garrisonville Road to Furnace Road. And this would complete the full sidewalk segment through here. Currently, there is a crosswalk shown, but not all the sidewalk is completed. This site also provides interparcel connections to the property to the east. There are two interparcel connectors shown on the concept plan that could be used to further mitigate traffic impacts in the area. As it can be seen on this generalized development plan, similar to the previous plan, the entrances are in the same locations. The entrance on Garrisonville Road, though I will note, is a right-in-only entrance. That's a standard practice the VDOT uses to minimize traffic pulling out into the roadway near an intersection. So if you're traveling westbound on Garrisonville Road, you'll only be able to pull in directly. You'll have to exit off of Tech Parkway, which is a signalized intersection and is a much safer traffic condition. This is a picture from the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan recommends this area as a commercial corridor, so the existing zoning and proposed use is compatible with that designation within our comprehensive plan. With regard to public facilities impacts, a gas station generally generates more than 1,000 vehicle trips per day, so our ordinance requires that a traffic study be conducted. One was provided with this application and looked at two intersections, one with Furnace Drive and Tech Parkway on Garrisonville Road, and also at Keystone Drive. The overall trip generation for the proposed uses on the property would be almost 2,000 vehicles per day at full buildout with 277 AM and 208 PM peak hour trips. Looking at the overall level of service, our comprehensive plan recommends that any development project maintain a level of service C. If there's any degradation below a level of service C, that they would make mitigating measures to ensure that the intersection overall is held harmless. As you can see by this chart, the current levels of service C with no build, or excuse me, current levels of service with no build is currently a B in the morning and a D in the afternoon. With the construction of the improvements that have been identified in the traffic study, both the AM and the PM peak hours will be at level of service C, complying with our comprehensive plan guidance. Specific improvements dealt with that single right entrance that I mentioned, as well as extending a turn lane along the entire frontage of the property to help cars get off the main travel lane. And also, as I mentioned earlier about the hashed left turn lane that was blocked off on Furnace Road, that will now be open to a full traffic movement, so that will help alleviate those traffic movements at that intersection. That's one of the improvements that specifically helps with the level of service at that intersection. And staff notes that the study did not show any significant impacts at the Keystone Drive intersection. Our comprehensive plan has architectural design standards that it recommends, and the building designs and the canopy designs that were proposed with the project, which were part of the CUP conditions and proffers, believe, staff believes that they meet our recommendations in the comp plan, talking about with the architecture, we have varying roof lines. We also have varying materials that are durable on the building. As you can see from the diagrams, it looks like there's a combination of stone on the front, as well as various pitched and raised roofs on the facades. With regard to the proffer changes, it references now the new generalized development plan, changes the maximum square footage on-site from 60,000 square feet to 45,000 square feet. That, to a large extent, is due to the smaller office retail building that could be constructed on the property, due to the fact that the Wawa takes up much more land area than the proposed bank that was previously shown on the property. Proffers with regard to demolition of the existing buildings, as I mentioned earlier, about constructing a six-foot wide sidewalk along Garrisonville Road and Tech Parkway, the turn lanes at the entrance, as well as creating the northbound left turn lane, as we discussed previously. With regard to the conditions, it limits the fuel pumps to 20 fueling positions, in other words, 10 pumps with two, or 10 units with two pumps on each unit, requiring the underground tanks to be located, generally shown on the generalized development plan. And one of the issues that the Planning Commission had discussed at the hearing was the fact that there's a restaurant on the other side of Tech Parkway. So this condition requires that there be screening provided adjacent to that fueling station location so that people that are patronizing the restaurant will not have to look at a fuel truck dispensing fuel on-site. Also, there's a conditions with regard to having evergreens in the transition buffers with the adjacent residential uses, as well as fencing to help screen those uses as long as they remain in residential occupancy. Also, regarding signage, ensuring that the signage on any signage facing the residence would not be illuminated to cause undue light pollution onto the neighbors, as well as the sidewalk connections shown on the generalized development plan. With regard to the overall findings, staff sees a number of positives, and it's consistent with the recommendations of our comprehensive plan for land use in our bicycle and pedestrian facilities plan. Also, our neighborhood design standards, it's consistent with the commercial development pattern in the area. It's recommended as a commercial node. The CUP proffers and conditions can mitigate many of the potential impacts of the project. We did not note any specific negative aspects at this point in time. The staff is recommending approval of both the proffer amendment pursuant to ordinance 19-47, as well as the conditional use permit pursuant to resolution R19296. The Planning Commission, in its public hearing, recommended approval of both applications unanimously with the addition of the conditions for the crosswalk, which ended up becoming, converted into additional language on the proffers, that the crosswalks would be installed prior to occupancy of the building, and then also the screening of the fuel delivery area. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Harvey, Ms. Mauer?
I just have one quick question. The easement to 1957, is that that large parcel behind? I see 1957B, but nothing in here tells me which one is 1957. I think it's a large parcel behind.
Ms. Mauer, I believe you are correct, because this is 1957B at this location.
Right.
So there are existing easements recorded on the property. The easements...
It just looks like this property in the back is landlocked?
And there is actually, was a purchase, easement agreement between that landowner and the owner of this property.
Okay.
And that easement agreement has stipulations as to where the access points are. The current access points for these properties, there are one located in this location, another one approximately in this location, and there's also access that runs through the site to the proposed entrance here. So this property back here would get access off of this location point, whereas this property immediately to the east would get access from this location point.
Okay, so there's an easement discussed in the proffer for 1957, and I'm just clarifying that it's that back... I'll wait till Charlie comes up. Charlie probably can answer that question.
Any other questions for Mr. Harvey?
I have a question for Mr. Harvey.
Yes, Michelle.
Mr. Harvey, back to evergreen. Evergreen, to me, just means it's not deciduous. It doesn't mean it's a screening evergreen. It could be a live oak. And so, do we, in our landscaping standards, does it define how large an evergreen must be if we're gonna make that as part of the transitional buffer?
Supervisor Shelton, our landscaping standards for our zoning ordinance require that, in the case of a situation like this where we have a residential use in this location versus where the gas station would be, that the intervening property line would have a transition buffer. And that transition buffer requires certain number of canopy trees, understory trees, and shrubs. Depending upon the type of evergreens they use, it could either be an understory tree, a shrub, or possibly even a canopy tree. But the purpose of that condition was to ensure that in the wintertime, there would be some vegetation that would still provide some softening of the visual effect.
Any other questions?
Just one.
Yes, Mr. Dudenheffer.
Jeff, does the Garrisonville Special Tax District extend down this far?
Mr. Dudenheffer, my recollection is it stops at Shelton Shop Road. I don't believe it goes beyond that.
Interesting. Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Thank you, Jeff. Does the applicant wish to address the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the members of the board of supervisors. My name is Charlie Payne. I represent the applicant. I will answer Supervisor Mauer's question. You want me to answer it now, or do you want to...
Yeah.
During the presentation?
Just, it looks like the easement agreement might be... I just want to make sure.
So there's a recorded easement agreement. I believe the property owner acquired this property from the family...
Okay.
...at the corner. So there's a reservation for an easement. 1957C is behind us, and it wraps, it actually wraps around as well, so it's to the north, and it also wraps around to the east. So there's a recorded easement, and I think the family also owns 1957, which is on Garrisonville Road. I think a family member's here, they can confirm that.
Okay.
But there's a recorded easement across, so there's a recorded easement that comes north to south that gets them to Garrisonville Road, and is an easement that allows them to get to Tech Parkway.
Okay.
And there's an easement along Tech Parkway, which is a private road. So I think we got it covered from that perspective.
It was one of the questions that, one of the items that Crystaline discussed, and I believe it was discussed at the Planning Commission, and...
Right.
Clarifying.
Yeah, and there was a question at that time, and we didn't, you know, I didn't have any recorded documents to attest to at that point in time, but we did show the easements on the site. So there, so how we have currently constructed or laid out the GDP, we're still reserving those access points.
Okay.
And of course, this is all preliminary at this point with the GDP. All this will be finalized at the site plan stage. So hopefully that answered your question. And the property owner's here, too. I don't know if she may be able to add on to that as well. But I have a quick presentation. I know this is the only public hearing this evening, so I'll be as quick as I possibly can, and I'll answer any questions thereafter, and I'll try...
You can start if you'd like.
I'll try not to. I know the Yankees are losing right now, keep, keep, kept, keeping an eye on the score.
I know.
I know. But anyways, I'll be quick, and I'll try not to repeat anything that Mr. Harvey said, except the Esquire thing did make me chuckle, Jeff, because usually that comes with something bad after, so... But thanks. So just a real quick, just who's Wawa? I think we, believe we know who Wawa is. Obviously, they have several convenience stores in the county, but this is just a quick overview I thought would be interesting. They're privately owned. It's the seventh-largest coffee retailer in the country. They're actually, interestingly, sell about 2% of the fuel in the U.S. Top 25 Forbes. They have 3,000 employees in the 864 stores, including 87 in Virginia. They employ a lot of folks. A site like this will employ about 50 people. You can see they have tuition reimbursement, college graduate leadership programs, benefits for their employees, retirement contributions, and et cetera. You've seen their store designs, I'm sure, if you've been inside one. Here's just a quick overview. Just impact on Virginia jobs, taxes... just a quick overview. Just impact on Virginia jobs, taxes, community. Again, they have 87 stores operating in Virginia. They have 2,800 people they employ in the Commonwealth. And of course, that generates positive wage corp and real estate taxes. A site like this, they'll invest $6 million in construction. There'll be about 50 to 70 people will be hired. So this is a positive economic development project. And like I said, it'll be about 50 permanent jobs from one of these sites. They employ Virginia-based engineers when constructing new stores, and Virginia vendors, and they employed a Virginia attorney for this project. Local community giving, this is just some of the donations that they have made, including to our own Stafford County Volunteer Fire Department. Just real quick on the project, it does include two parcels. This is a proffer amendment and a CUP. The proffer amendment is, as Mr. Harvey had noted, is an amendment to the 2008 rezoning to change the prior use, my bank use, to a convenience store with a gas station, with a fuel station, and the CUP is required for that. And I'll get into just a few of the proffer amendments. You're familiar with the area. It is in Rock Hill District, is located at the intersection of Garrisonville and Tech Parkway. We're surrounded by commercial uses. The comprehensive plan for this particular area is for commercial use, and there's a Sheetz right across the street. Comp plan, again, the project is consistent with the county's comp plan. It's designated within the suburban future land use area, is in a commercial node, and is in our urban services area. As staff have noted, consistent with our comprehensive plan. Here's the GDP, which you have seen. Jeff, can I, I tried to use this last time, and I got really messed up. Let me make sure I don't, thank you. So the potential, whether interpartial connection area is here, Ms. Mauer?
Mm-hmm.
Just so you can see. And you'll see the access that comes through the site and comes out here, and also out here. And that's what the current configuration of the easement looks like today. We also proffered elevations. So here are the elevations that we have proffered, very high quality. Just some more elevations. Transportation, as staff had noted, this would be, have direct access off of 610. Our TIA showed that the development is not anticipated to have any negative impacts on the level of services in the area. We did extend the right turn lane by 100 feet, and also improving the intersection on the other side, which will include 200 feet of storage, which will improve that level of services from D to a C. Fire and Rescue Station 14 is located about 1.2 miles away, and the project will have no impacts on schools. Proffer changes, just real quick. The commercial office retail has shrunk from 45,000 to 60,000 feet to accommodate the proposed use. We have increased the width of the sidewalks from our prior approval, and we've also added crosswalks, as staff had noted, and as the planning commission extensively discussed with us. Also, we've updated, obviously, this convenience center use versus the bank, and you see the, also, the transportation improvements. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Payne? Yes, Ms. Bonkey?
So I saw that the owner of the property was Union Bank. Did they anticipate building a site there, building a branch there at some point in time, or is this piece of property that's in foreclosure?
At one time, they were proposing a bank there.
Okay.
But that's not part of the plans anymore.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Payne.
Thank you.
This time, I will open the public hearing. Remind the public, if you wish to speak, for or against the application. When you get to the microphone, please state your name and address. When the green light comes on, you have three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you have about a minute. And when the red light comes on, you need to wrap up your comments. I would remind you that this is on the Wawa request only, and their public hearing. So with that said, anyone in the chamber like to speak for or against this application? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Janet Bridwell. I'm at Seven Greenleaf Terrace, Stafford. I am just going, wanted to go on record stating that I would like clarity on the easements to the property in the back. That is my property, and I just want to make sure that it is not going to get landlocked. And they have not provided me the information that they stated that they would when we were here last on September 25th.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the board on this?
Hi, I have a question, maybe, but it's more of a statement and a question. My name is Rebecca Chung. Again, hi. So that Garrisonville Road, it'll be, the Wawa will be right across from the Sheetz, correct? I'm new to this. They're building a barrier, a vegetation barrier, and when you come out of the Sheetz right now, you can't see all the way if you're taking that turn that's right in front of the Walmart. So I have to pull up and almost be in the street to see what's coming from my left. So is that same problem going to happen on the Sheetz, and then people can't see, and then it may create a traffic problem? Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the board?
Is there two public hearings? CUP's next. They're both in here?
I need more than three minutes. Paul Wodowski, Eight Pickin' Lane, you're in my district. You're competing with my Sheetz. 87 Wawas, we already have 11 in the general area. I didn't count the Fredericksburg one before I came here. I always love sidewalks to nowhere, so build it, build it six feet or five feet. We all know about the comp plan. It's out of date. It's still 20th century savvy. It's not 21st century. And all you have to do is listen to the vegetation aspects. And this evening, when I was driving back, I went to the post office, and no one would let me in. So I had to go all the way down to Joshua Road. Now, if Wawa was there, I could have pulled in Wawa, and then I would have been in there, and I would have been at the traffic light, and I could have gone down Furnace Road and come through Chop Tank. But six of you don't live in Rock Hill. You have no idea what's in Rock Hill. You're, you're in your own world. You're either in your gerrymandered Garrisonville District, or your Griffiths Whitewater District, or your George Washington District. They're all GWs to me. But you have no clue of the traffic issues that are there. You've taken all that space. All the geese are gone. Now you got the storage area across the street. And I think Wawa, just, I took someone to New York City on the bus to Washington. We stopped at the Wawa, and no one was at the cash register at the one on 610 and Eustis Road. So who's going to monitor those jobs? I know you're bringing all these great jobs. You're almost like Celebrate Virginia. You remember how he said he's going to bring in all these great jobs? And now we got people writing about that you're not getting enough tips. It's just simply amazing. And you know my view of CUPs? It's called favoritism. If you need a conditional use permit, you're favoring someone. You're not, and you're all Republicans, so you wear a pirate's patch on the left eye, and you favor the right. Oh, no, we have one independent, I'm sorry, who wants independence in local politics. Now, I always love when staff tells me there's no noted, because you don't live there. So how could it be negative? And I love transitional buffers, because I love Leland Cypress trees and oak trees, but you're dealing with developers. Oh, $6 million in construction costs. And think of all the people you can hire. You could even hire a Virginia lawyer. Golly.
Anyone else in the chamber like to address the board on this, for or against? Seeing none, I bring it back to the board. Does the applicant have any, would like to address any of the comments that were brought up?
I'll go.
Before you do, I need to close the public hearing. Thank you, Ms. Mauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Charlie Payne, Chairman and other members of the Board of Supervisors. Charlie Payne, I represent the applicant. Yes, Esquire. Just, I was just talking to the adjoining property owner, and we failed to get back to her from the last meeting. But I did do some homework to make sure that we were responsive. So there is a recorded easement. We can't vacate her easement, as I explained to her, without her permission. In the way that we're showing it on the GDP, it's the same, except it's hard to see, because you got, you know, you've got traffic flow arrows and the Wawa sitting there. But I'm going to take care of any questions she may have hereafter, just to make sure she has clarity on those issues.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Mauer?
So it says, connection in favor of tax parcel 1957 in the approximate location shown on the, so it's 1957, and I think when the original proffers were done, it got split up to B and C. Is that what I'm assuming from the original proffers?
So the parcel where the...
It's number 10.
Yeah, so where the parcel where the, I don't have the original proffers with me, but the parcel that...
This is your current proffer.
Yeah, the parcel, 1957 is the front parcel. I'm sorry, Supervisor Mauer, where were you reading from?
It's number 10, page 3, on the proffer statement.
Yes. So...
Just...
I think that was the orig, I don't know where 1957, 1957 was another property owner at one time.
Okay.
But we have a recorded easement that was done in 2000, I got it right here, 2009, that is for the benefit of 1957C, which is the parcel behind, the parcel that she was asking not to be landlocked. It was behind...
So there's an easement for parcel 1957C?
Yes.
All right. Do you, do you mind if we say that 1957 and 1957C, that we, we ensure that easement, if it's already existing?
I don't have a, I don't have an issue with...
Okay, so we can amend this?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. I'm assuming you guys are the applicant?
It's of record, so it doesn't change anything.
Okay.
I just don't want to, this is your last meeting. I don't want that to delay the...
And I don't want to delay it either, but I also don't want to landlock her, and, and you know how I feel about on the paper.
Yeah. So the interpartial connection we show that's in this proffer statement, of course, this was done initially in 2006, does benefit 1957C.
Okay.
And it can benefit 1957. It's the front parcel, and I think her family owns 1957, too, now. It's on Garrisonville Road.
Yes, sir, that's different property.
Right.
The property in the back is in a trust.
Right, yeah, I understand that.
Okay, so don't forget another show.
So she, what she's suggesting is 1957C also be listed in the proffer statement, which we have no issue with, because you already have an easement, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Perfect.
Any other questions? Mr. Payne?
Yeah, it keeps interpersonal connection.
Thank you, Mr. Payne.
There's a recorded easement. I can't vacate her easement without her approval. I mean, so it is a recorded easement, right? I'm sorry, Jeff.
So if there's a hiccup, it's still preserved?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Cohen?
Very quickly, about the question about visibility with your, that was raised by Ms. Chung. Do we have any, any idea about the hedge and whatnot, or will you take that into consideration as you're going forward about the visual aspect?
I think that's more of our landscaping plan.
I got that. I'm just asking if they're open to looking at that and thinking about that. I'd hate to have the person come up and raise it when we just ignore it.
Do you want to address that?
Mr. Chairman, and Supervisor, Mr. Cohen, the landscaping ordinance, as well as the zoning ordinance, require clear site triangles at all entrances. So if there was a planting plan for that buffer, it would have to have the vegetation near the street where you have site distance. The vegetation has to be low shrubs, not exceeding two feet in height, to try to minimize that visual impact. Sometimes, that doesn't work when things grow up, or, or if there's a grade change, that could have some impacts. But VDOT will also regulate that as well when they're reviewing the site plan.
Well, thank you. I just, since it was raised, I just wanted to get an answer for...
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Mauer?
So to, to Mr. Cohen's point, and to your point as well, on the site at Tech Parkway, we do these plantings, and this is something that I think that we, as a board, need to consider after this, not before, is, is when these plants grow up. So if you go down to Tech Parkway, now that the plants have grown up, you can't even see the front of that building. And we had to go through all sorts of maneuvers in order to be able to see the buildings again. This is something that this board really needs to look at again, and we talked about it when we were doing the landscaping plan, that these bushes and these trees grow up, and we do that two feet at planting. So your point is well taken. This is something that we've struggled with, you know, visual versus, versus, now versus later. So we hear you.
Any other questions for Mr. Payne? Thank you, Mr. Payne. I'll bring it back to the board. Ms. Mauer, your district.
A couple of things. Mr. Payne, thank you very much, and also to staff for updating these documents before us. We have different documents that have been updated, and so my motion is going to be for O-1947, as presented to the board tonight, which includes, and I would like this recorded in the minutes, the proffer statement as of October 9, 2019. And the reason this is important is because there's a proffer statement in our packet from September 26, and there's two different versions of it with the same signature. So, so the October 9, 2019 proffer statement, as presented to this board, in addition to amended to read as follows, on number 10 of the proffer statement, the applicant for parcel 19-5 agrees to allow interpartial connection in favor of tax parcel 19-57 and 19-57C in the approximate location shown on the GDP.
Supervisor Mauer, since the proffers are submitted by the applicant, we actually need to get that information in writing from the applicant before the board can adopt it.
Do we have a notary in the House?
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Mauer, the applicant has added that parcel in and initialed.
Okay.
Beside that proffer 10.
Is that all you need?
Ms. Pennington?
That's sufficient, if it's okay with Mr. Harvey, and he's checked the language, and it's sufficient to what was requested.
Yes, they were, they added the word "and" 19-57C, which was the requested parcel.
Okay. Fifty, no, 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 if you look at the next sentence, next line.
No, I know that, but when you read this, what did you say?
In favor of tax parcel 1957 and 1957C.
So Supervisor Mauer, would it be helpful if I read the proffer in its entirety?
Please.
To make it clear for the board. Proffer 10, interpartial connection. The applicant for parcel 19U-5 agrees to allow interpartial connection in favor of tax map parcel 1957 and 1957C in the approximate location shown on the GDP.
Yes.
I have a motion and a second. Is everybody happy with this? Everybody good? Okay. I have a motion and a second and a discussion. Hearing non-cast, your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Ms. Mauer?
Make a motion for resolution?
19-296.
R-19-296.
I have a motion and a second and a discussion. Hearing non-cast, your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to nothing. Good luck to you. You run a great organization. Our next meeting will be held on November the 6, which is a Wednesday, the day after Election Day. Don't forget to vote, and don't forget to watch those nationals. Meeting adjourned.